This meeting to order. So I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alders Miyazi?
Present.
Alder Revere?
Here.
Alder Bitterver?
Here.
Alder Weheliad?
Here.
Alder Abbas?
Here.
Alder Alboras?
Here.
Alder Benford? Alder Benford? I see that Alder Benford is here, so I'm going to mark him as present, if that's okay. Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Carter? Alder Conklin?
Present.
Ready.
Ald- Alder Curry?
Here.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Alder Halverson?
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney? Just didn't see her. Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Lemmer?
Here.
Alder Martin?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We have staff read the meeting instructions, please.
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists, that is Alders and staff, have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists can also rename themselves if they wish to add pronouns after their name. Please do not alter the naming convention otherwise. Also, please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email list on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I will just add to those opening remarks by reminding us that we are all here to do the best for our city and would ask that we be kind to each other and refrain from using profanity, whether you're an Alder, a staff person, or a registrant. Our first item is a presentation courtesy of our poet laureate. So I will turn it over to Angie Trudell Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present another poet in the community. It is my great honor today to introduce my friend and poet, Jodi Vander Mullen. Jodi has served as a poetry editor for the Progressive Magazine, very esteemed magazine, and represents Wisconsin Humanities on the Wisconsin Poet Laureate Commission. She is the founder of the At Just One Haiku Project, created in April 2020 during National Poetry Month to introduce the therapeutic effects of poetry writing to the public during pandemic isolation. Her weekly Tuesday haiku and more work can be found on Instagram at JV Words. Please welcome Jodi Vander Mullen, esteemed poet and friend.
Thank you so much. Thank you to laureate Trudell Vasquez, to Mayor Rhodes Conway, and to the council. Hello, old friends and new. I'm very proud to be a Madison poet, and I wrote this poem for us all. Ring. We are the unfinished agenda, spooling, infinite. We are action items. We are the big idea. We are the paper upon which this is printed. We are the wood from which it is made. We are each generation, one ring of this tree. Rooted. How far back we go, you will not see unless you cut this down. We have no intention of that. I've made this speech once before. The tempest that roars within the lion's gut of these tormented times demands its long due meal. Neither the shallow pool whose bottom is found with the tip of a single toe, nor the Hollywood cardboard cutout set, toppled with the strength of one strong hip, will match this rightful appetite. This season's urgent planning demands its ample earth. One shovel of dirt will not do. Dig deep. Meet this great cat's maw with equal teeth. Fortify this home. No wolves will huff and puff this frame. Over there, look. A stony pillar? A statue of hardened delay? Or is that just plain salt? Douse it now and see. This needle, not moved but buried, at a pace that outrivals the onslaught of the termite's steady chew. Behold, hear us, those whose sharpest need is met with coolest glance, computer chessboard marking out old familiar moves, whose very living breath inhales this daily dread, told to drop, a windpipe blocked, their mother's child's beating heart altogether stopped. Those whose young voices are heard in this room, this Zoom, just now in the fray, a truer democracy's proper bloom. Those who scrape dinner plates on meeting nights, who tuck it all in, and when full glass spills out the hasty door, wave hands saying, "I got it, I'll clean it", whose sturdy green light says, "Go", laboring hard each time, every time, choosing to mean it. And you, granola bar and water bottle, poised, way too much wear, weary, keeping faith that it's worth it. So cast off those incremental blues. Grab that hammer, get under the hood. Write it up, knock it out, run it past legal, phone a friend. But skip the castle dripping jewels, skip the warship and its spacious brig. Instead, let us gaze upon an orchard with its tallest flourishing tree. Turn our eye to the town's inhabitants gathering under its shade. Let there be one last one of us among them. Passes extra bucket into nearby hand, pauses then to rest, leans against its sturdy trunk. Conjuring a season, once upon a moment, met. Filled with rain and seeds and soil, it sowers largely unrecorded, difficult to trace, but for a secret within this tree, never to be cut. The years we took hold of that ageless wheel, the years we took our turn. This unsparing lavish ring we made. Silent, ancient, thick. Thank you all for your service.
Hope you can see the virtual round of applause you're getting, Jodi. Thank you. Thank you, Jodi, and thank you, Angie, for bringing us poetry. And now, from the sublime to the mundane, President Abbas, would you move suspension of the rules, please? You're muted, Alder.
All right. Thank you very much. I need some caffeine. Moves of suspend rules 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.2 for ordinances, and 2.25 Resolution for items so designated on the agenda.
Second. Moved in second to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? Seeing no objection, those rules are suspended. And that brings us to early public comment. We have two folks registered for early public comment, starting with Mia Masak of Superior Street, to be followed by Nico Magayan.
Mayor Mia is not in my list. Nico is.
Right. Nico Magayan of Jennifer Street, then? And if you would please tell us what item you're speaking on.
Hello, everybody. This is Nico here. You see him, his pronouns, and I'll be speaking on Agenda Item Five. So tonight, I want to ask you all to oppose Agenda Number Five. It would set a dangerous precedent regarding development across the city. You know, I want to share a little bit about how I've been to some of these meetings in the past with where they're supposed to be brought. You know, folks in the community are supposed to be brought to meet with the developers. But the conversation ends up usually being one way. You know, first of all, the company involved in designing the building usually brings a lot of people to really rival or even exceed the number of community members present. And so then sometimes we have, like, city elected officials or staff and so-called neighborhood associations sort of convened, convening and facilitating these meetings in a way that tends to privilege the voices of a lot of these companies. It limits public input to usually about three minutes per person, and yet there's unlimited rebuttal time for the company, and it's usually only reserved for the very end of the meeting. You know, we hear things like from the developer, right, that, well, the state Supreme Court doesn't allow cities to mandate affordable housing, so we tend to rely on developers to figure out how to get government money to pay for building affordable housing. Or we hear that the state government-run WITA 710 program, it doesn't work for us as developers. We can't get a dense enough building with the money the state can give us. We don't get a lot of tax credits because Madison is wealthy, so it's very competitive. Or if the city had wanted to preserve any of these buildings, they would have done so, or just following the city's plan here, or they tout that this is somehow a progressive project, and that a lot of the people in the room are progressives. More housing, period, improves affordability. You know, we can appreciate everyone who has issues with the lack of affordable housing, but we got to take a bigger look at what affordability means, freeing up housing in the suburbs that families can buy. So we're basically told a lot of talking points from developers, and we don't get as much opportunity for the public to say what they feel about it. And so, you know, this proposed transfer of decision-making power from the Plan Commission to the Planning Department, it means that developers can propose a project and have that approved by planning staff without input from neighbors who actually own property next to these developments. And there's no guarantee that more affordable working-class housing is going to be built in our neighborhoods with these changes. So, you know, we just want to caution that people need to have a say into this process. And while it may be quicker to skip public input on these things for the ends of building more affordable housing, the people need to be a part of developing those solutions. And if they don't want that to exist in their community, that should be for them to decide and for those voices to carry more weight than simply what city staff want to do about it. So I would say, please, vote no against this. You all have seen, you know, news articles about this, that this would contribute to gentrification by driving up land values and property taxes. With denser market rate and luxury housing, it would encourage large developers to buy up properties, and it would lead to demolition of already existing affordable and workforce housing, the missing middle, and would facilitate large developments of up to 60 units on residential streets. More importantly, would silence neighbors' voice in decision-making with buy-right developments that sidestep the neighborhood and city review. I think this is bad public policy. It doesn't actually get at the issue of more affordable housing needed in our city. And we got to do more to really make sure that people's voices are heard and that the decision-making places more weight on those voices rather than just a few. So I'll pass.
Thank you. I think we now have Mia Masak of Superior Street. And Mia, if you would tell us what item you're registered on, please.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Agenda Item Number Five, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Grateful for this time. I'm mainly calling in tonight just to express my dismay for the agenda. We have been discussing the worth and value of human lives to an extent that even their existence in the park is apparently problematic, right, for months on end. Yet instead of actually coming to resolve our adequate solutions, we then turn around and spend precious energy and time on debates pertaining to property and how to go about keeping those who already have their needs met happy, satisfied, content, and of course, not confronted by the hardships of others as those who need us most continue being cast farther away from our reach. And I think that's partly because we don't always respond well to the reminder of our own fragility, nor know how to react when being faced with the hardships of others. Human nature is interesting because we'd rather often run away from difficulty than face and move through. But we can no longer attempt to avoid these issues because they're only getting worse. And the most mind-boggling thing to me is that we possess the capability to actually do something, but instead, here we are. So as I said, I oppose Number Five with every fiber of my being. Zoning pre-existing privilege that will support gentrification is the exact opposite of what our city is most in need of at this point. Higher taxes for those who can barely afford life as it is, when what should really happen is those who are living comfortably with more than enough to spare should pop it up. It is our responsibility to look out for one another, our duty to leave no one behind. And it isn't even a matter of lacking resources because we have them. This boils down to being about principle, morality, character, humility. Will we choose to do the righteous thing that may not benefit us directly, but instead bring about wellness and stability for our neighbors, knowing it's not only justice in motion, but also a direct reflection into our soul as well as investment into the overall quality of our state? We have an opportunity to lead in this way and contribute directly to the liberation of our people. This is a part of the revolution. We are addressing systematic errors that have been keeping us down and hindering our evolution as a species. If it is not what's best for those most in need, my answer is no, and yours should be too. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the early public comment we have. So we'll go to the consent agenda. President Abbas.
Thank you. Now it's time for a consent agenda. This time consent agenda will be moved with recommendation action listed for each item exact. Number one, item which have registrants wishing to speak. Number two, item which require an extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on consent agenda by unanimous consent. Number three is item which order persons have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Agenda Item Number Three to Eighteen are public hearing items. Following items are extra majority item. Extra majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. File Number Sixty-Six, Agenda Item Number Sixty-Six, Legislative File Number Six Four Six Three Seven Second Substitute, amending the 2021 capital budget to transfer 55,000 of existing borrowing authority between engineering and major general building improvements. Agenda Item Number Seventy, Legislative File Number Six Five Four Eight Two, authorizing the acceptance of a grant for 250,000 for the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation and Community Development Investment Grant Program, and authorizing the contract with WDC and Red Caboose Child Care Center, required 15 vote. Agenda Item Number Seventy-Three, Legislative File Number Six Five Four Nine Nine, amending the 2021 adopted operating budget for CDRE development purchase services by 100,000, and authorizing the community development authority to manage the Madison Pop-Up Shop Program, required 15 votes. Agenda Item Number Seventy-Six, Legislative File Number Six Five Five One Three, amending the 2021 adopted operating budget for the Planning Division Neighborhood Planning Preservation and Design Section to accept $50,000 for the national endowment for the art and authorizing the purchase of services, required 15 vote. Next is Agenda Item Part of the Consent Agenda with additional recommendations as noted. Agenda Item Number Sixty-Three, Legislative File Number Six Five Six Eight Eight, Appointment of Metlin June for confirmation as the Common Council Office Legislative Management System Specialist. CCEC recommendation is for approval. Agenda Item Number Seventy-Two, Legislative File Number Six Four Six Five Four Nine Seven, Second Substitute, providing, not second substitute, sorry, substitute, providing urban community art network, $20,000 grant for a matlet program on the 100 block of State Street using Small Business Equity and Recovery Program. Item requested for exclusion, I believe, I don't see any on my list. Next is item introduced from the floor for referral, Legislative File Number Six Five Seven Two Two, Public Hearing. Takar Rajmia Rajma Shushi, I don't know if I pronounce right, Four Six Seven Four Cottage Grove Road. Recommendation action is referred to Alcohol License Review Committee. And the public hearing six nine twenty-one and Common Council will be June fifteen twenty-one. And happy birthday in advance to Alder Taggiver as well, June thirteenth.
Thank you, Alder. We don't have any items to pull for registrants, so do we have Alders requesting exclusion on any items? Alder Benford?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to exclude Item One Fourteen, please.
Right. Item One Fourteen, Alder Figueroa Cole?
Item One Fifteen, please. Sixty please, five seven five.
Items One Fourteen and One Fifteen. Are there any other exclusions requested? Are there any disclosures or recusals? All right, let me check. Alder Benford, Item One Fourteen is on the agenda solely for the purpose of additional referrals. Did you have an additional referral? Otherwise, it's not eligible for exclusion.
Thank you, Mayor. I read that wrong. No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll get to it when we come to it. All right. So just to recap, then, Items Three through Eighteen are public hearings. The following are extra majority, sixty-six, seventy, seventy-three, seventy-six. On Item Sixty-Three, the motion is to approve. On Item Seventy-Two, the motion is to adopt the substitute. We will exclude Item One Fifteen. We have one file being introduced. I'll just note that on Item Thirty-eight, there's one registrant in support not wishing to speak, Alder Figueroa Cole.
I just have a question about item sixty-two.
What's the nature of the question, Alder?
Um, I just trying to understand what, what the, what exactly is it that we are asking to do here? Um, what is the what is the city county liaison committee? And is that active today? Was that something put in place to get rid of it? Are we, what does the whole process mean?
Alder, properly, you'd need to exclude it from the consent agenda to, to get questions answered and discuss it, but I will note that the recommend, the, the uh, the item was to eliminate the committee. But the recommendation on your agenda is to put the elimination of the committee on file. So if you leave it on the consent agenda, the issue goes away. And the committee stays.
Perfect. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, Alder. Any other exclusions, disclosures, recusals? Seeing none. Um, uh, President Abbas has moved the consent agenda. Vice President Martin.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection. We'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and we will thank the staff that were here for those items and release them. Um, and we will go on to our public hearings. Starting with uh item number three, which is legisstar six four seven one nine, open a public hearing on a new license for Brick House Barbecue DBA Riley's Bar and Grill. We have no registrants, oh, close the public hearing. President Abbas, a motion, please.
Motion to place on file without prejudice.
Second.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote to place on file? Seeing no objection, that item is placed on file without prejudice. Uh, brings us to item four, which is legisstar six three two one six, open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at forty-two oh five Portage Road. We have one registrant in opposition not wishing to speak, Rebecca Ott Ford of Chandler Street. Are there questions for our registrant? Seeing none, we will recess that public hearing. President Abbas.
Move the motion to refer this agenda item to June twenty-first Plan Commission and July sixth, common council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objections recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. And that brings us to item number five, which is legisstar six three nine zero two. A substitute amending sections of the MGO to increase allowable densities and decrease conditional use thresholds in certain multifamily residential mixed use and commercial districts. A number of registrants on this item. Our first registrant is Robert Proctor of East Mifflin in support. Representing the Realtors Association of South Central Wisconsin to be followed by Helen Kitchell. Do we have Robert?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Robert Proctor, Government Affairs Director for the Realtors Association of South Central Wisconsin. Representing three thousand four hundred members in the greater Dane County area. We strongly support all of the city's efforts to create more housing, including its efforts to play, to find a place for the homeless shelter, the Affordable Housing Fund, homeownership assistance and land banking. But Madison also needs the private sector to build more housing units. As stated in the city's comprehensive plan, almost every approved multifamily project in the city requires, has required a conditional use, use permit. Yet the city's zoning code, code routinely, routinely allows single-family houses, commercial and retail to be permitted uses. It allows large office buildings as permitted uses. Single-family homes, commercial and retail should not trump multifamily. The objections raised to this very modest proposal do not withstand scrutiny. One of the concerns raised about this proposal is that it limits the public's input. This concern ignores the reality of the city's extensive planning process. The city receives a wealth of public input in its comprehensive plan, its twenty-six neighborhood plans, twenty-three special area plans and its nineteen neighborhood development plans. This is where the public's input is best at the planning stage. That's what the comprehensive plan, neighborhood plans, special area plans and development plans are for. We decide ahead of time what uses we want and where we want them, agree to the plan. It is predictability and stability, stability that generates investment in building the missing middle. This proposal was specifically identified in the comprehensive plan. Strategy number three under new neighborhoods and housing section was to increase the amount of available housing with the following action item. Explore adjustments to the number of dwelling units, building size and height thresholds between permitted and conditional uses to increase the allowable density for residential buildings in mixed-use zoning districts and select residential districts. We are just asking that the city follow through on that plan. Another objection raised in opposition to this ordinance is that it will possibly cause displacement of existing housing and mixed use. First, the housing crisis is at a critical stage in Madison and only getting worse. Housing should not be sacrificed over a fear of displaced retail or commercial, even if those concerns are valid. Second, and more importantly, this modest change to the ordinances will not lead to any significant displacement of existing affordable housing or retail. We hope everyone has read Dr. Kurt Paulson's letter and report to the council where he looked at the actual ordinance changes in specific land areas in Madison to show that it is unlikely that there will be a displacement caused by the zoning changes. Dr. Paulson's explanation is similar to the explanation given by staff. The experts that have reviewed this concern agree. The proposed ordinances are unlikely to cause displacement. At fifty thousand feet, everyone agrees that we need more housing, that we need more density, but there has always been a fear to have multifamily near single-family homes. Fear of multifamily is the reason that it has always been a conditional use. This reality has caused a devastating impact on people of color in Madison. Zoning ordinance have, have historically discriminated against people of color and lower incomes. Today in Madison, only twenty percent of black families own their own home. This means eighty percent are renters. This legacy continues to negatively affect people of color. As stated in the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing choice for households of color less than Madison is accessible for housing. If we're truly committed to building more and small, more small and medium multifamily projects, then it should be as predictable, predictable to build such developments as it is to build single-family homes. If these small and medium density multifamily projects comply with the existing adopted neighborhood plan, zoning ordinance and building ordinances, there should not be additional barriers to the conditional, of the additional barrier of the conditional use process. We urge you to follow the strategies set forth in the comprehensive plan and to approve, and to approve this important amendment to the zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Helen Kitchell of Potter Street to be followed by Brad Hinkfuss.
Okay, um, uh, basically, um, I'm my primary concern all along with this, the new proposed um ordinances, zoning ordinances, has been with the, the loss of the opportunity for neighborhood input on those projects as they um are proposed. Um, I've seen a number of projects be vastly improved by neighborhood input, um, things that developers had not considered because they don't live in the neighborhood. Um, and I also feel like that really um negates the opportunity um for um just the democratic process of having that input in those processes. Um, I've been told that there an alternative process would be developed through the Alders, um, but I um I'm worried, I just heard about a, a new development in our neighborhood that we hadn't heard anything about before. So I'm worried that that uh would be as good as those Alders notify their neighbors. Um, and the other big concern that I have is for the unintended consequences of these zoning uh changes. I think that um although the, the concept was good, I think the ramifications of the implementation of these changes um was not fully analyzed. And I think it needs to be fully analyzed in terms of the, that whole thing, how it trickles down. And in applying it to my neighborhood, we have a number of, of uh mixed developments within our neighborhood, small um little um four and eight unit kind of uh things, but those could be bought up and could be made bigger and um and the, and change, the changing of the housing at this point, those are small affordable units by working people. And I'm afraid that um those would be taken up developers by the time they've built a new building or they've modified the building. They've gotten enough money in there. They really need to go to, or they would be going to market rate and not keeping it, um, those low affordable housing. So I'm very concerned about that unintended consequences of um those, that kind of housing being bought up um and then converted. And then the developer saying, well, we can't, you know, the cost of, of building these days, we can't possibly charge working um rates. We'd have to charge market rate. So those are my big uh concerns, just about the total unintended consequences of what would happen with regard to affordable housing. I know the intent of this is not affordable housing. I understand entirely the need for housing within Madison, but I think that these zoning changes are not going to accomplish uh that need as well as some other things that might, could be done. So with that, I'll close.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Brad Hinkfuss of Corey Street to be followed by Marsha Rommel.
Brad, you should have, there you go.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Hello, Alders. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Over the past few months, and especially the past few days, you all have received many extremely well-written and researched letters advocating to delay, transform, or reject the proposal before you. I hope you had the time to read that, all that feedback because it presents a powerful body of evidence and expert advice. Will not summarize or restate it all here. Instead, I'd like to point out that both sides in this debate have more in common than they realize. There's a common understanding that we collectively face challenges in the population growth and housing demand in Madison. There's a common understanding that meeting that challenge must include greater density. There's also a common understanding that no new housing will be as welcome as truly affordable housing. And most everyone would agree that certain parts of our process must change. What has not happened is much working together to tackle, tackle this common problem. Instead, there's been a focused effort to drive forward an inflexible version of change. This version of change focuses intently on upzoning and changing conditional use thresholds. The response has been emphatic and powerful. When the people of Madison understand what is being proposed, most of them reject it. Consider the hundred and forty-eight people who signed on to a letter that was minimally circulated starting just a week ago. Consider how many people have spent so much time researching this issue in an attempt to forestall the damage it could cause. Now imagine redirecting those same people and that same effort into fighting solutions. Instead of stating, this is how it will be, it should be a question. How can we craft policy to make this work and gain your support? The best solutions lay in compromise and common buying. And so I ask you to reject the proposal tonight because I sincerely believe that it will not accomplish the same aims. Instead, it will cause damage to our established neighborhoods. It will disenfranchise all residents, not just those of one neighborhood or another, or one race or another. It will not create affordability. It contradicts so much good work that has been done in the past. What we can do is learn from the process that has played out around this issue. We can build policy that learns from the shortcomings of the current proposal that draws on the research of all those who rose up to resist it. There's something of value here, even if you pause long enough to recognize it. For that to happen, please lay this proposal aside for tonight and commit to working with a broader group of people to build something that we can all support. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Marsha Rommel of State Street to be followed by America Tabby.
Hello, Alders and Mayor. This is my first um visit with you as a, a regular citizen and it's really, you know, one of those issues that I've been following for a long time, so I'm sure you're not really surprised that I'm here. And I know you probably got a lot of emails and might not have read them all. I know how that is. Cause I know I sent mine over the weekend and I hope, hopefully you had a chance to look at it. And I wanted to ask that you would consider referring this um, this ordinance and to do more work. Cause I don't really think it does what you're hoping it will. Honestly, I do not think it will help find more missing middle develop, housing or developers. And I don't think that you really fully, I don't know if you fully see all the mismatches between these changes and what could happen in the comprehensive plan. And I would think that since consistency with the comprehensive plan is something that, you know, I, as a plan commission member thought about a lot. I don't want you to get into unintended consequences where um things would show up that then like you change the mixed-use district zoning and then it doesn't quite meet with the, the land use category of an area and allows more than the comp plan would. And I don't really think you have a handle on all of those changes. I think, I think the, the housing-only ordinance is a closer to being ready, but I don't think it's ready yet. I asked if you would consider amending the TRU two to lower the threshold. I think that's the area where those missing middle developers are likely to have a benefit, but I don't think it's ready yet. I think what we really need, and I've, you know, talked to quite a few developers now since this came up, is we need to have um some kind of round table or a work group with these uh with, with BIPOC, with nonprofit, with small-scale developers to find out like what kind of things should we be doing to help um make, facilitate their, the process. Because if you think about it, they have to go through two processes. They go through the land use approval process and then they might go through the community development process. So I get how that could be more complicated and risky. And I'm not saying there's easy answers, but I think um spending some time looking at solutions would be really helpful. And we all know we're in an affordable housing crisis and we're told over again, we got to build more housing. But I worry that if we just move forward with this as written, we'll get some unintended consequences of more displacement. I'd agree, disagree with one of the earlier callers. I think this ordinance as it's currently written incentivizes demolition and assembly of parcels in the mixed-use districts in ways that you might not realize. And so I just would ask that you take the time to do this right. As many staff have said, this is modest. It's like almost so modest that nothing's really going to change. So I don't think there's the urgency to act right now. I know there, you want to do what's right, you want to do good work and I thank you for that and it's really important. But I think um you still have some more things to work on and I hope that you will. And I do appreciate your efforts. Over the weekend, I did notice Alder Abbas's or um, his alternate. And I think, you know, having fought the good fight against F thirty-fives, I think he raises some really good points. It's just, to me, it just gives more, it underscores why we should refer so that, you know, because we want to have our plans and growth happen where we think it's best. And if it's just going to have a environmental and racially unjust impact, I think this is something that we should address or you should address before we move forward. And again, the thing that would, could change density the most is accessory dwelling units. And that's on the to-do list. Please make that part of a package of changes. So I, I'll stop now and I just wanted to thank everyone for the work that you've done. Um, and I just wanted to say one more thing about, you know, we've heard a lot about this is such a small percentage of change. But you know what? Everything in my district, District Six, it was all about the TSS changes or NMX. So that was all I ever did as a person dealing with development. So while you might say it might not affect every Alder or the whole city, it certainly affects certain areas disproportionately. So please recognize that as you move forward. And again, thank you and I, um, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Uh, next is America Tabby of East Mifflin to be followed by David Bierman.
Promote them to a panelist.
Hi, can anyone hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, and Mayor, um fellow Aldermen and fellow residents. My name is Amir. I have resided in the Marquette Teddy Laffin neighborhood for many years. Marquette neighborhood is one of the oldest and most historic neighborhoods in Madison. Yet there are very few buildings in the Yet there are very few buildings in the area that commemorate Madison's early history. This neighborhood has given some of the best festivals and concerts and gatherings in the city. I have learned to adore this area. There is a very strong bond amongst residents in this area, especially since this pandemic. Many of us have leaned on each other for support and guidance throughout this ordeal. Madison has always been touted as a diverse and open and progressive. But is it? I am sad to say Madison is not the same. It has not changed well for the working class and people of color of Madison. All I see now is luxury apartments constantly building, being built or in the process of being built. Some apartments in this area are charging over $3,600 for a two-bedroom apartment. I speak for many of us in this neighborhood. There is absolutely no way anyone can afford to pay that obscene amount of money for an apartment. One of the new high-rises built is empty right now. Forgive my frankness, but it seems that Madison only wants to cater to a very select few. We desperately need to have affordable housing. Housing should not be a privilege for the few, but should be a human right. And 2222 Mary Street is one of the only apartment complexes available to the working class. Many residents here have lived in this complex for many, many years. This is our home, our sanctuary. If this zoning happens, well, what happens to the residents of 2222 Mary Street and becomes torn down and luxury apartments are built in this area? You will be displacing people and pushing them out. It is immoral and wrong to do this to people, especially coming out of a pandemic. I urge this committee to hear our pleas and please reconsider this rezoning. I strongly oppose this. We can do better for each other. And Madison needs to do better for their residents. So my answer is no. And that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Our next registrant is David Bierman of Nova Way to be followed by Mike Thompson.
Evening. I oppose amending the various subchapters of 28C and 28D in Madison general ordinances. And I urge the council to vote no on this proposal. This ordinance proposal is yet another step in the march to silence the city of citizens of Madison to have a voice in the development and the effects it has on the constituents of this city as well as elected public officials. This proposal negates public input discussion, removes the public right to voice concerns, destroys the neighborhood associations and how that voice is carried forward to our elected officials. And also stifles the input of development and issues that will affect the quality of life in their neighborhoods, districts, and the city as a whole. Citizens of the city continue to have tax after tax imposed upon them. This proposal removes the basic rights of representation of the public vote to their policymaking elected officials by allowing paid city staff, employees, to make policy. This is a very, very dire situation and I urge you to please vote no on this proposal. When we lose the voice of the citizens to discuss if we want a huge development in our neighborhood and how that will affect our quality of life after paying tax after tax for year after year? That is about as deep as you can cut into somebody's life. Suddenly, you have a huge apartment building behind a single-family dwelling without any alder or neighborhood association input into this thing. A city staff member can just make that decision because it complies with the zoning ordinance of change. A neighbor can put an accessory dwelling or multiple ones in their yard next door to you. You have no choice, no voice, but please continue to pay your tax. This is extremely wrong. This city works the best and it has over the years with public input from the grassroots level and a voice all the way through their neighborhood association and Alders. This is just another step in an dictatorial fashion to remove that noise. To continue to pay taxes without the representation of your elected officials and making these decisions is wrong. And I urge you to vote no on this proposal. And further, if it is changed or brought into a different amendment to get the public input from the grassroots level so we can all come to an equal consensus and move forward in unison. This divisiveness in this city is tearing us apart. It's evident in what's happened in the past year. We need to have a voice for everyone brought forward and consensus made with our elected officials and not by staff. Thank you very much. Please vote no on this proposal as it is written.
Thank you. Our next registration is Mike Thompson of Raymond Road, representing the Orchard Ridge Neighborhood Association to be followed by Mitch Blazek.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, may I show my screen for a minute?
We're not able to share screen, but if you had sent something to staff in advance, they would be able to share it or you can email it to all Alders.
Okay. I emailed that to each alder this morning, a letter from the Board of Directors here at the Orchard Ridge Neighborhood Association. Last week, we did a survey of our neighborhood regarding this question. We asked people whether they agree or disagree with this statement. Madison's existing process for requiring neighborhood input on proposed changes in residential zoning with the current conditional use triggers should be maintained. Do you strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, or are unsure? Now, the responses to that came in rather quickly. It's been a hot topic here. 203 people from our neighborhood, and that's quite a few for one of these Survey Monkey surveys. 203 people responded. Forty-seven point eight percent strongly agree with the statement. Keep the conditional process as it is. Another 26.6% agree with it. So 74.4% of the respondents agree, keep the current process. Strongly disagree was 3.5% and disagree was 7.9%, a little over 11 total. That left 14.3 who are unsure. So, you know, I think, I don't know how different Orchard Ridge is from other neighborhoods, but if it's even close, you know, most people are against this proposal. And I would urge people to look at what the people of these neighborhoods want, what the people of our neighborhood wants. I live two blocks from a rather slow strip mall and I could see somebody buying that up without anyone knowing about it. We've had projects go in in the past without any sort of notification for one reason or another. People just chose not to tell us. And, you know, this would make that even easier. And so the people of our neighborhood strongly hope that we'll retain the current system. And thank you, everyone, for listening.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mitch Blazek of Pocahontas Drive to be followed by Tracy Doreen Dietzel.
All right. Thank you for your time. I think I'm in support of this proposal. Madison itself is established on an Ismus. So there's a limited amount of land that's available. Being able to allow these additional units would help increase with our density, allow more people to move into the downtown area, allow small businesses to develop and grow during these difficult times. The existing land use regulations are outdated and not adapting or updating as our city is trying to grow and prosper. This proposal would allow existing established neighborhoods, like in the Viola's and Willie Street area, to add additional units without having to construct new buildings and allow reinvestment into these existing building structures without much impact to what's already established. So hopefully this gets approved and passed through. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tracy Doreen Dietzel of Patterson to be followed by Ann Walker.
Good evening, Mayor and Alders. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. As you are well aware, this new zoning ordinance proposal plans to rewrite democracy in Madison. City planning has sent a proposal to this council for approval that has made some, but not enough, changes. The changes that were incorporated were due to citizen involvement. Citizens warned of unintended consequences. And this is precisely why this council cannot pass this item. One thing that has not changed is that democratic process is being removed with the buy-right gift to developers along with rezoning. You will be told that citizens will not lose their voice, that there will be one non-binding initial public meeting requested of developers. Non-binding, that's like saying, well, do whatever you want. And if there are public concerns you don't like, ignore them. And if there's an idea you like, incorporate that. Why would I want to give developers free advice and give up the tiniest of democratic process left in the city? This does not encourage citizen involvement with city planning. In fact, it discourages participation by design. Near the end of a previous city meeting Alder Heck mentioned, we need to silence these privileged voices, referring to citizens who speak out in opposition to some aspects of building projects on the Ismus at planning meetings. Indeed, there must be planning to build housing for people moving here as there will be climate refugees. There already are. But many of them can't afford to live here. Many can't afford the rents. Many of them want to buy property but can't find a house or condo to buy. So they buy in a neighboring town, drive to Madison to work, don't pay Madison taxes, even the city's wheel tax. People who plan to retire here are having to move. Are the people who are leaving Madison counted in the projected numbers? Is this council going to take care of the developers first? Smaller missing middle are not truly what is being proposed here in housing. What I hear from many people is that the corridors of large solid-block buildings going up in Madison feel more like Chicago. Many new buildings and mixed-use buildings are apartments, not a unit someone can buy. Over the last 50 years, two-thirds of the world's wildlife has been lost. And we share our city with many winged, four-legged, other non-human and human sisters and brothers who do not fit into a capitalist agenda. Please don't take away the chance for those humans that do speak for these non-capitalist citizens to call attention to important considerations before it is too late. This proposal has not dealt fully with planned development in areas of our city that are vulnerable to flooding, bird migration, unworkable trickle-down, social impact, and loss of democracy. Let's plan with seven generations in mind or we may just ruin the environment and our democracy for the next generation. I urge you to vote no on this proposal and demand that Madison does not decrease democratic processes. Do not let this council be known as the council that gave away Madison. Thank you.
Next is Ann Walker of Winnebago Street to be followed by Mara Eish.
Ann, I see you're on the phone, star six to unmute.
Thank you. Evening. I live at the corner of Winnebago and Mary Street. I do not support the zoning changes proposed. The ordinance violates the 2018 City of Madison Comprehensive Plan. Mary Street is designated low-density on the generalized future land use map. Mary Street was specifically looked at several times during the comprehensive plan process. Low-medium was considered but was not supported by the Plan Commission. So therefore, Mary Street was designated low-density. This change would essentially make the density for the location medium residential. This change violates the Comprehensive Plan. In addition, Mary Street runs parallel to the Yarhar River. The area floods. The first time I experienced the river flooding was 1993. It's flooded many times since. And with the last flood, we needed the help from the National Guard, city staff, many, many, many volunteers. Many, many sandbags were required to protect people's homes. Older developments along Mary Street, as well as newer developments, the Marlin specifically located along the Yarhar River in East Washington, did require protection from the floodwaters. I do not support additional infill in flood-prone areas. In addition, I would also ask Alders to carefully consider where we locate infill in relation to our public parks, our public right-of-way, our green spaces. Our public resources, especially in green space deficient neighborhoods like the Ismus, can acquire a private feel when infill is located too close to our public resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mara Eish of Pontiac Trail to be followed by Beth Sloyes.
Good evening. There are so many issues I would like to address regarding these changes. Then I try not to duplicate the ones that have already been said. This goes beyond density. It also includes the amount of open space, potential for trees that we are accustomed to having in Madison. Alders, you received a survey from Summit Woods in opposition. This is the same survey you received from Orchard Ridge. And I welcome you to compare those two surveys and find out how much opposition there is to this. I oppose the zoning changes because it will not address the missing middle. All of the we anticipate, we hope, we think are not going to make these changes affect the missing middle. The Planning Department uses the 4606 Hammersley Road development as an example of benefits of these zoning changes. This development is in Summit Woods neighborhood. The developer, Ripple, had the ear of the Planning Development Department for months before the neighborhood knew about it. I naively expected the Planning Department to be an advocate for the neighborhood. That did not happen. We were not part of what happened in our neighborhood and that is a problem. We went to the press. We went to the TV. We were shown on the six o'clock news as opposed to building a three-story building of studio apartments. We wanted the missing middle. We wanted family units. We are getting studios. This has been a David and Goliath issue from the start. Summit Woods has hired a lawyer to fight the city on this development because we were not adequately represented. This lawsuit is still pending. Laborhoods are slowly being eliminated as a voice in the governance in Madison. Summit Woods is a young, newly organized neighborhood. We are denied the opportunity to write a neighborhood development plan and to have a neighborhood sign. Neighborhoods are being replaced by area plans. Summit Woods is a small neighborhood, a diverse neighborhood, but we are not ready to just lie down and be run over. I welcome other neighborhood associations to also speak up. Conditional use is in place for a reason. Let's follow the money to see who benefits, those who are building the buildings. These buildings are housing for rent, not for ownership. Madison has a 47% ownership rate. That's deplorable. Summit Wood wants what the rhetoric is proposing, addressing the missing middle. We can't get it and these zoning changes will not achieve it either. My regret is that we did not buy this property and serve the missing middle ourselves. Thank you.
Our next tradition is Beth Sloyes of Nova Way to be followed by Bill Connors.
Good evening, council members, President Abbas and Mayor. I am strongly opposed to this ordinance change. In my short experience here in Madison, I have found that neighborhood associations are sections of our city with a common identity. They offer a place to meet friends, exchange information, create projects and priorities, propose solutions, and have fun. A neighborhood association is formed based on the needs and desires of its residents. A key part of the development process that is currently in place is the provision that requires developers to present their plans to the alder and the district as well as to the neighborhood association. In this way, the neighborhood has a voice at the table towards decision-making and placemaking in the areas that most directly impact them, their home place. Most recently, the power of community voices being heard on the north side involved a decision to not open Coolidge Street to 5,000 average daily units of traffic or more, but rather to open up to pedestrian and bike traffic only. rather to open up to pedestrian and bike traffic only. Ekin Park residents felt this was in keeping with the desires of its residents, in keeping with their neighborhood plan, and in keeping with the city's desire for more transportation options for all of Madison through its comprehensive plan. As a city, we are currently considering a public transportation network redesign to consider the alternate pathways for travel in our city, to walk, to bike, to take a bus, and to keep our car use as limited as possible. How we create our transportation system has a direct impact on future development. If routes are to be suspended, transfer stations removed, and other major shifts in how we gain access, public transit systems revised, then shouldn't we wait until that report has finalized, the new system in place? Transit-oriented design requires good transportation. As we look towards the F-35 jets arriving in our city, we need to consider the impact of the noise and vibration on housing that is currently in place, as well as housing that is yet to be built. Is it ethical to approve housing that sits next to the noise line of the F-35s with the 65 decibel level? That makes the area unfit for housing on one side of the imaginary line, and yet okay for housing just inches away. The F-35s create a whole other layer of issues, housing construction for sound and vibration abatement, as well as the need for absolute transparency related to aviation easements on needed properties. Putting the city staff-proposed zoning changes into effect is wrong in that it undercuts the very fiber of the public process. To remove decision-making from Alders and the families and businesses they serve is not in keeping with the intent of the city's very democratic structure. To remove one of the only opportunities for public input by taxpayers into how their neighborhoods are developed is wrong. To allow for major life-impacting decisions to be made administratively by paid staff seems like a sure route to bullying of neighbors. City staff are not policymakers, but rather paid by our tax dollars. Our process with our Alders makes it for better policymaking and ultimately better placemaking. Area community members and business owners work with the decision-making process for moving the metro bus barn to an alternate location, which in the long run will provide ready access to a facility that does not contain high levels of toxic gas vapors and will be available to meet the mayor's needs for the push for the BRT. The conversations took almost four years to complete, but when the momentum to a better solution was brought forward, the decision to purchase the other facility took mere months. When the community members and the city leaders work together to create a consensus option, the outcome does not take a long time to complete. The Finance Committee took little over four minutes to vote on approving the funds for the new location to be purchased. This only could have occurred with vibrant and robust public engagement and the work of Alders to engage, listen, and take policy action. The racial justice and social equity tool speaks to the need for more affordable housing, and yet we see many large, high-rise apartment buildings being brought forward in our city without any requirements for some of the units being in price ranges that are affordable. We face a homeless crisis that needs to be addressed, along with many other pressing issues, rather than this issue of removing public engagement from the development process. During a panel presentation on gentrification in the winter of 2019, the representative developers spoke on how great it would be to get fast-track system in Madison for approving housing. There was little to no mention of how to create housing that would alleviate the gentrification of neighborhoods that become exclusive and expensive. The goal of these changes is to create easier paths to the creation of more housing. While this sounds noble and grand, the ordinance amendments that Planning and the ordinance sponsors are proposing creates an uneasy momentum by eliminating key components of the neighborhood.
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Bill Connors of West Main, representing Smart Growth Greater Madison, to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
Thank you for listening to my comments this evening. First, I want to point out that the provisions in the proposed ordinance, which make smaller housing development projects permitted uses rather than conditional uses, provide no benefit for the developers who are members of Smart Growth Greater Madison. The developers I represent do not develop smaller projects. The large housing projects and housing and mixed-use projects they develop will continue to require a conditional use permit or planned development zoning regardless of whether you adopt this ordinance. Smart Growth Greater Madison urges you to adopt this ordinance because it is necessary, not sufficient, but necessary, to start to close the gap between housing supply and demand in Madison. Smart Growth also urges you not to adopt the proposed ordinance that would require ground floor, the ground floors of smaller new apartment buildings to contain retail space on most streets in mixed-use zoning districts. In big projects, the big developers will include retail space on the ground floor if they think there's a good chance they can find a tenant, because a coffee shop or restaurant or something like that is an amenity for the residential tenants on the upper floors. And even if the big developer is reluctant, the city can negotiate for ground floor retail space in order to approve the CUP or General Development Plan. Big projects enable big developers to take some risk when it comes to including ground floor retail space and hoping they will be able to rent it. But smaller developers with smaller projects cannot afford the risk of being unable to rent ground floor retail space. So if you adopt the amendment requiring ground floor retail space on most streets, you will essentially be saying to smaller developers and smaller projects, go away. We don't want your smaller housing projects in Madison. Go somewhere else to develop them. You have heard many people say this ordinance does nothing to increase the amount of affordable housing in Madison. That is true. But if you do not adopt this ordinance, you will cause the number of affordable housing units in Madison to decrease. If you do not adopt this ordinance, every year, there will be fewer and fewer what is called naturally occurring affordable housing units in Madison. What do I mean by that? Am I saying that those naturally affordable housing units are going to be torn down if you do not adopt this ordinance? No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that as long as there continues to be a large gap between housing supply and demand at all price points in Madison, that will cause the rents for all housing in Madison, including the rents for naturally occurring affordable housing, to spiral upwards. If you want to know more about how this happens, please ask me a question. The Res J report says it best. When regions do not produce adequate supply of housing to meet demand, prices and rents rise faster than incomes. The lowest-income households experience the most housing squeeze and cost burden. If you do not adopt this ordinance, you will not keep the same number of affordable housing units. You will decrease the number of affordable housing units by causing rents to continue to increase faster than incomes. Please adopt the proposed ordinance as recommended by the Plan Commission or with Alder Abbas' amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Tyson Vitale of Stoughton Road to be followed by Edward Kuharsky.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I am registering in support of item five. I think there's been a lot of work, which I want to thank, you know, staff and the elected who have kind of moved this forward to make this even happen, this modest proposal even happen. And it's, you know, unfortunately, not really surprising to see how much backlash there is in opposition to such a modest proposal. I think that there are some serious concerns of our city as a whole regarding especially equity and inclusion that we need to, we definitely need to solve. And let's, let's be frank, maybe this was oversold as solving. However, I don't see that as a reason to oppose it. I think that it does not get in the way of any of the concerns that have been brought up by folks. And if I'm being honest, I don't know, after just listening to this conversation, it just, you know, when neighborhood associations and NIMBYs are on talking about screaming equity and inclusion, it just rings a little hollow to me. I'll just say that. So I am in support of this. Please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Edward Kuharsky of Sydney Street to be followed by Raven Parmentier.
Thank you. So I've written to all the Alders and to the mayor last week about this topic, and I have read a number of the things, including Brian Hinkfest's good letter, the Neighborhood Association and a letter from Marquette and SASE and so forth. And I've also read good stuff from things like my fellow architect, Donna Crowley. And I think the big concerns that come up for me, I've been pretty well outlined by those folks. The first one is the diminishment of democracy. It's a fundamental thing. You know, I and a number of people spent an awful lot of days down at the Capitol 10 years ago to try and push back, shut down the democracy at that state level. And we have then watched the gerrymandered legislature push through, sometimes successfully, sometimes not, so-called business-friendly measures. And the rhetoric's pretty familiar, I'm hearing, about this proposal, about making things easier or more efficient or more certainty. That's the word that really stuck out to me, was certainty about the process, which is really a code word just for lowering your standards or for eliminating regulation that is a positive thing and that is a democratic thing. And so I don't want to see that happening in my city. It's bad enough that it's happened how it has at the state and federal level. And this city should be a little beacon, like some other islands of civilization around the country, to really represent what we ought to try and be in this country. And so if you can't figure out how to include public input in your process, then there's something wrong with your process. Now, I've been involved in developing both of the Occupy Madison projects in Alder Abbas' neighborhood, and we went through a full planned unit development process for both of those. It's a little shoestring, low-budget operation in both cases, but I didn't find, and the client did not find, the regulation process to be burdensome or overly long. But on the other hand, even though we were pushing the envelope on what we were asking for, we came forth with deliberately reasonable and acceptable thing by listening to the neighborhood a lot. We listened to the neighborhood in Evereston East five times and two more times for the folks within 200 feet. And that really improved and informed the project, and it also forged a good bond with that neighborhood that works to this day. And, you know, I have a great concern about these, what I call four- and five-story gated communities that are being built quite a bit in center city and out further out. But, you know, I don't see that that housing form really supports good community and good relationships between people. It's not a very functional forum for a good democratic and communitarian city like we ought to be trying to have here. I also am concerned, I saw the map that was circulated in my neighborhood of the areas that would be subject to these changes on the Tenny Lapham neighborhood and then over in the Marquette neighborhood. And I see a huge corridor of what I call our affordable corridor of housing on the Tenny Lapham side, and then blending, as Donna Crowley has pointed out, into a really precious historical collection of structures further to the downtown side of things. And in either case, that's, it's just troubling to me to have either of those being threatened by some more robust development and speculation forces. And the same on the Marquette side, between Williamson Street and Lake Monona, particularly down on the end toward Norton Park and even further. There's precious old houses and wonderful buildings, and they got these multi, these higher or more permissive zoning categories because they already are multi-housing. Even though they're old houses, they've got maybe two or three or four units in them. And that's a very positive way to deal with our infrastructure and honor our history and also not burn up a whole bunch of carbon making new buildings and tearing down old ones. You know, the embodied carbon in those buildings is paid off decades ago, and you can't put up a new building without coming up with a carbon deficit that's going to last at least 30 years, and this concrete frame is more than that. So I think, I'm just asking, why is the template of the zoning areas that were applied eight years ago according to what was there in order to try and cure a great deal of nonconformance from the 1964 code? Why is that, why is that an appropriate template for?
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next registrant is Raven Parmentier of Mary Street to be followed by Rebecca Parmentier.
Hello?
Go ahead.
My name is Raven Parmentier, and I'm a resident of 222 Mary Street, which is one of the buildings affected, would be affected by this proposal. I'd say that as a result of this proposal, the people, Apex, and individuals responsible for running our current apartment building, which is affordable housing, would likely be demolished and rebuilt, and we would be essentially evicted as a result of this proposal. So we've lived in this building for 10 years. We know all of our neighbors in this building. We know even the neighbors aren't in the apartment building. This is a community, and we know each other, we're familiar with each other. We are an important part of our neighborhood, and we don't should be completely bulldozed by this proposal, which removes any voice that we low-income people would have in this affordable housing that they want to build in place of us. We would not be able to afford it either. I mean, the other affordable housing complexes that have been built relatively nearby, a mile or so of us, we can't afford in those places. That's beyond our means. We wouldn't be able to afford the building that they would replace our building with. This would cut us low-income people out of this neighborhood in order to make affordable homes for low-income people. Does that, I just don't understand how that makes sense. Not only it would affect a lot of people, and would affect a lot of families who already live in this building, because it's the only place nearby that we can afford, and there's no way we would be able to even have a voice in any of these proceedings under this new proposal. It would completely cut us out in favor of making sure that development companies would have all the power over whether or not, over how this would affect the neighborhood. I just think that taking the power out of the hands of the people living there who need this kind of housing in the first place and putting it in the hand, and putting it in the hands of companies is a really backwards way of trying to create affordable housing for people who need it in the city. In addition to that, this would, not only affect the people, but also negatively affect the ecology of the local area. The river nearby and the greenery in our building right now, or right nearby our building, I see lots of animals in this area, birds, rabbits, lots of ducks and other seasonal animals will often use this area as kind of a place where they hang by and bring their hatching. I've seen ducklings in this neighborhood. I've seen lots of animals moving about. And if they bulldoze this building to build one about the size that they want to, what would happen is the big oak tree and this local wildlife that's very rare now by this Yharr River now, that would also be undoubtedly cut down or gotten rid of in order to make more homes for, in order to make more homes for people who have more money than us. And I just don't, I don't see how that's also something that can just be ignored since, as mentioned by some earlier speakers, the ecology and the environment and the people who are, the life that is not us, humans, is also very important. And I think preserving a little bit of the natural environment that remains here is something that should also be paid attention to. And that's part of why having the local voice of the neighborhood is important in these kind of proceedings of building new buildings. Because then companies don't generally care about this kind of thing. Ultimately, the incentive is financial, because these are private companies. Their goal here is to make money. It's not to build affordable housing. There are private companies that make money off of these buildings. So unless there's a very big financial incentive towards treating people with care, making sure everyone gets their needs met, protecting the local environment, they're not going to do that. And if there aren't radiation, like regulations and proceedings that allow the local people to have voice in this, they're not going to take those into account, and they're not going to bother, because there's no incentive to do that. Companies are ultimately in it towards making a greater profit. That's why it's a private company, a private development company. And relying on private development companies to be the voice of, first of all, democracy towards making sure that everyone has affordable housing is just not a good solution. This isn't going to affect any, this isn't going to positively affect anyone in this area. It's not going to create affordable housing for low-income people who already live here. And it's going to have a negative effect on the local environment. So what is the greater benefit to this proposal? It seems to me that--
Madam Mayor, that is five minutes.
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Rebecca Parmentier of Mary Street to be followed by Maya Pearson.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for hearing me speak. I have been a resident of 222 Mary Street for 10 years. I have been a resident of 222 Mary Street for 10 years with my two children. I'm a single parent. This is affordable housing that we live in. There are 22 families in this unit, in this building. There are some disabled households, some caretaking households, taking care of family members, other disabled caretakers. None of us were given, given any kind of notice of these proceedings. We found it by our neighbor. We weren't notified by the city. We weren't notified by Apex. We know from experience from that Apex has been trying for years to demolish this building so they could build luxury apartments in this space. This space is used by commuters, bicyclists, people on the river, people who like to fish along the river. Somebody had commented that when you build a large high-rise commercial buildings that are residential but luxury buildings, they tend to keep, they diminish the green space in the area. We are concerned about all that happening. When you have to cause, many people have said, and it's even written in the proposal, that this would not displace, most likely not displace people. This is clearly not true. We would be displaced. We have many people who would be forced to move, who have not the resources to move and may end up homeless. One thing I've noticed is in these many form letter emails that people have been sending, many of them from Realtors. I counted at least nine real, different Realtor companies and they were saying all the same thing. It was a form letter. Thing, and one of the things it was saying was, thank you for making affordable housing a priority in Madison. I want to be very clear, nothing in these changes promises affordable housing. Nothing makes sure that that will happen. I think it's just a talking point to make people think that this, this is just going to happen somehow magically because developer, developers will have the ability to do whatever they want. But the other thing is it says that it will modernize our Madison zoning code. This doesn't modernize Madison zoning code. In fact, it actually regresses it by taking away the democratic voice of the neighborhoods and the people, tenants. Nothing is outdated about the democratic process. The other talking point I've heard a lot is that this is a modest proposal. This isn't a modest proposal. To take away people's voice is not a modest proposal. And I think that that is also designed as a marketing strategy to make you, make us think that we are being foolish to think this is a big deal and we should just pass it without thinking. So, but I know that everybody here is a great thinker and cares about what happens in Madison. So again, back to the Apex story. So for many years, Apex has been trying to tear down this building and build luxury apartments here. The comprehensive plan has already addressed and shut down Apex several times in this process. And the reason I keep bringing this up is even though this is just one example, I just wonder how many other unheard voices there are tonight of other buildings in, that would be affected by this, other people that would be dislocated, evicted without any, you know, cause or notice, have no voice in the process, people who have lived in their apartments for 20, 30 years, who have established themselves in the neighborhood. But anyways, Apex was shut down because of many different issues. We would lose the green space, the flooding issue, the congestion with traffic. Not only would we have multi-unit and, you know, 25 families would be displaced in this place would, I forgot what I was going to say. But like I, I only found out about this a couple of days ago. We've had to fight this before and this to me seems like a workaround of private builders, developers, real estate companies. It's just a workaround so they don't have to go through the vetting process. And I, and to keep associating it with affordable housing is a misnomer. I think it's designed to just make you think that by voting for this, you're somehow going to magically create affordable housing. In, in, in this area, there are five high-rises within seven blocks of where we are. And now to put another one here, I think it would make the- Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Maya Pearson of Catalpa Road to be followed by Linda Lenhertz.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Maya Pearson. I am a black woman in the South Madison resident. Although I do not oppose this item, I also do not support it. In South Madison, development has been happening at a rapid rate, at a rate in which many community members are unaware of the totality of the developments going up in our neighborhood. In my neighborhood, we have mixed housing, homeowners, apartments, et cetera. As we walk on the town of Madison into our city and as a development happens, my concern is that our neighbor, our neighborhood and our district will not have an opportunity to have input in that development. A comment that was made during a housing development community meeting by a developer was that it was not his job to solve gentrification and affordability in our city. This was the response to neighbors' concern about the development only offering one and two-bedroom housing and market rate rents. What was, what has been a trend in our city development in my neighborhood and throughout the city? What about the low-income family of three or four? Where would they live? What about the elderly person on a fixed income? I believe that we need to grow housing. However, there is no guarantee that true affordable workforce, low-income housing will be built. There is no guarantee that many of our working families, many who currently are houseless and homeless may be able to have access to that housing. I do not oppose development as long as it's equitable, especially for black and brown people who have been most disenfranchised by the housing practices and developments in Madison. There was a comment earlier that stated that a large percentage of black people are not homeowners in my neighborhood specifically, which historically has been one of the only places that black people could own property. I have watched developers, property management companies swoop in and purchase property at the only thought of either flipping, tearing down or for newer, larger property or renting. There is no, there is hardly no chance for people like me to purchase a property in Madison or even in my own neighborhood. Gentrification is happening quickly and my concern is that with the ordinance, as is my neighborhood, will be gobbled up by the future development of the Park Street corridor. It has been mentioned that the ordinance will give smaller and/or BIPOC developers a chance at development in our city. I think that's great and I truly do support that 100%. My concern is that what will, will that actually happen if there aren't any stipulations, et cetera, in place to ensure that they have that opportunity? In closing, I hope that Alders really think about the unintentional ramifications this ordinance may have. Really, it comes down to intent and the actual impact. Intent and impact. What impact will it have on communities like mine? What will happen to my South Madison that I have been raised in and have lived here since birth? Will there be additions to ensure that the city does not prioritize property and developers over people? Again, intent and impact property over people. Please remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Linda Lenhertz of South Patterson to be followed by Atticus Kirwin.
Good evening. I have a number of different issues I want to run through quickly. Recently, their water utility board is talking about water conservation because of the east side not having enough water. And that reservoirs are going to have to be filled overnight. Yet, a lot of this density is going along the East Washington corridor and other places on the east side served in the Zone 6E area that there is not enough water for. I think that's something that should be considered for where the, the additional density is going. The city recently addressed accepting almost $300,000 in a federal pilot program for transit-oriented development. How is that going to interact? Again, East Washington has a lot of CCT properties. Is that going to have an upzoning laid on top of it? Other places, Mineral Point Road in particular, has virtually nothing that is being affected by this ordinance. And so it may get the BRT overlay, but it is not going to be laid on top of another layer of zoning upgrading. Also, part of this grant is going to discuss about land banking and hiring a consultant. If all of these properties that are the large properties are already being able to be upgraded, is that going to increase the city's costs? The mixed-use building size under this ordinance becomes unlimited. There is no longer a maximum building size. Currently, for example, with TSS, mixed-use building of 25,000 square feet can fit 24 units. To go to 48 units for TSS will require either double the width or double the height, or it'll just have 370 square feet micro-units, which raises the question of whether increased height will be a next step similar to approving by right development to allowing demos to occur without approval for by right development. I'm concerned about why there is a difference in the mixed-use districts for a purely residential versus a mixed-use building. For again, once again, TSS can have 24 units in a residential, 48 in mixed-use. And this density is going to be going into the mixed-use districts where development has already been occurring for years. The largest residential district, which is SRV2 at about 1,100 acres, of all of this property, only 23 acres could be developed by right. The others are too large. Is the primary reason would be developed at densities greater than the ordinance. And most of these SRV2s are in older part of the city and tend to be affordable. We talk about saving farmland, yet the Nelson Neighborhood Development Plan that was adopted in November of 2019 has 68 acres that are being, being developed at six units an acre with an overall density of 18 units per acre. Yet, everything else in these older parts of the city are being increased. I don't believe there is uncertainty about development in mixed-use districts. Developers come from Minnesota, Georgia, Tennessee, New York. If there was uncertainty of any magnitude, developers from afar would not be seeking conditional use approvals. And developers, there already is a size building in the mixed-use districts that developers can build. They don't build it because they have conditional use available to them. I believe that developers will get this and they'll still be asking for conditional uses because they want to build something bigger. I think a question is where do people want to live? The Ismus has had a 4%, over a 4% vacancy rate for two years. Other areas are at just a 2% vacancy rate. There are many inconsistencies with the comp plan. State law requires zoning ordinances, including ordinances that are being amended to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. And for District 6, I sent to my Alder a listing of 17 different things that are clearly inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And so this does not further those goals. The comprehensive plan in general had corridors and activity centers where Dunne City was going to go. It was taking into consideration a whole bunch of different issues as to where growth should happen. And this ignores what the comprehensive plan had to say.
That's your time. Thank you. Our next registrant is Atticus Kirwin of Mary Street to be followed by Tyler Breeze.
Mayor, there's no Atticus in the list. Tyler's-
Tyler Breeze of Mary Street to be followed by Pilar Gomez Ibanez.
Tyler, you should have a prompt asking to unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, elder persons and fellow residents. My name is Tyler Breeze and I reside at 222 Mary Street in Apartment 10. I come before you this evening to denounce Agenda Number 5 on behalf of myself, but also my neighbors that weren't notified of the upzoning proposal. As we have heard tonight, housing prices are exploding in Madison like they are in most cities right now. Madison is a majority renter city where most renters are rent-burdened, meaning they spend over 30% of their income on rent. The affordable housing crisis has predated the pandemic, but the economic efforts of COVID-19 have only made it worse. Upzoning is no replacement for a meaningful and affordable housing strategy. In the rush to increase density, even if advertised as good for affordable housing, we risk hurting the most vulnerable in our community. Madison is expected to grow a lot in the coming decades and we have to figure out how to manage that growth. But the question shouldn't be, how do we accommodate high-income newcomers? Instead, we should ask, how do we protect the already rent-burdened populations who want to stay here? Instead of protecting these vulnerable commercial and environmental corridors with zoning, this proposal opens them to redevelopment that will price us out. Not just the low income, but the wildlife that resides on the Yhara River as well. We need to focus on helping out our community from the inside out and not with old trickle-down economics that have been proven time and time again not to work. We need to keep empathy in our hearts and as well in our public policy. I strongly oppose Agenda Item Number 5 and I urge you to vote no. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, our next registrant is Pilar Gomez Ibanez of Dewey Court to be followed by Peter Beeson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello. Thank you, Alders, and thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak. I oppose the zoning ordinance that you're considering tonight. You've heard and will hear a lot of good reasons to oppose it. And what I want to focus on is the loss of neighborhood voice. Madison has a long and great tradition of including residents in the development process. This ordinance silences people. It devalues people's voices by characterizing them with words like uncertainty, unpredictability, and barriers to the development process. Here's what I think will be lost if neighbors are streamlined out of the process. At meeting after meeting over the last several years in my own neighborhood, it's the neighbors that I've heard asking developers to include some affordable units instead of all market rate, to include units sized for families instead of all one-bedrooms, to consider adding density with smaller, missing-middle-sized buildings that fit better into residential neighborhoods, and to address any number of other concerns from preserving trees and green space to seriously addressing stormwater and flooding. This is deeply thoughtful input aimed at making the neighborhood a livable place for a wide variety of people and other living beings for generations. More often than not, developers tell us that none of these things are financially feasible. As a result, our neighborhood is rapidly becoming financially infeasible for people without high incomes. I can't emphasize enough that residents, and not usually the for-profit developers, are the ones trying to create affordable, inclusive, sustainable neighborhoods. An earlier speaker said that residents' input was best when it came not with specific developments, but earlier with participation in the comp plan and neighborhood plan process. I disagree. Individual developments succeed or fail in the details and it's the neighborhood review that looks at those details and makes projects better. I want to live in a city where the people have a strong voice in what gets built, not a city designed primarily by market forces. The first way can build a good community where all people can thrive and the second is driven by profit and will only exacerbate the inequalities we're struggling to solve. Please vote no on this proposal. Please take it as an opportunity to create a much better proposal that really does tackle Madison's crises of housing, affordability and inequality. Thank you for your consideration and for your work.
Thank you. Our next registration is Peter Beeson of Gorham Street to be followed by Ruby Owens.
Good evening, Mayor, Alder persons and neighbors. My name is Peter Beeson and I live in the Tenny Lapham neighborhood. I'm speaking in support of Agenda Item 5 or Legistar 63902 to update zoning in select neighborhoods. My only regret is that this is not a citywide proposal. My family and I moved into Madison and into this neighborhood as renters. And it is only because we were able to buy a duplex that offset some of our mortgage, we were able to afford to buy our home to stay in and stay in this neighborhood. Rather than converting our duplex back into a single-family home, we are maintaining it as a rental and provide quality missing-middle housing for our downstairs neighbors and tenants. My understanding is this plan will allow other families to do what we have done, either convert their homes into duplexes or triplexes or expand to add on space for an elderly parent, relative or neighbor. It is my understanding that this will also allow neighbors and residents to have an easier time constructing ADUs in their backyard to provide housing for elderly relatives or other people who desire that sort of living. In addition, this bypasses the lengthy, time-intensive- In addition, this bypasses the lengthy, time-intensive, financially-expensive, bureaucratic, and uncertain process that stymies small local developers and makes the process of building housing more expensive for everyone. That's not to discredit the need for neighborhood input. It just really does raise the cost and raise the timeframe, which makes it more complex. In addition to the concerns raised about equity and racial inclusion, it's worth noting that these zoning changes were indeed recommended and affirmed by Madison's Affirmative Action Commission from a racial equity lens. In short, I urge you to vote in favor of these zoning changes that allow more affordable workforce, missing-middle housing to be built and preferences the needs of all Madisonians, including newcomers, over the desires of long-term neighborhood residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Ruby Owens of Mary Street, to be followed by Gary Tippler.
Mayor, do not see Ruby was here.
All right, then Gary Tippler of Jennifer, to be followed by Kababa.
Gary, you should have a prompt to unmute. Gary, you should have a prompt to unmute. Not responding. Let me come back to Gary.
All right, then Kababa of North Hancock.
Yes, good evening. This is Kababa. First, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on this matter. Originally, I did not have any intentions to speak, but there are things that really made me feel that I need to register to speak. First, I do recognize that the elders who sponsored this bill have their heart and mind in the right place. But I also want to echo that this is not the right plan to support, to pass if you really want to address the problem that we have. I happen to be black, and I happen to be a developer. I have been following real estate investment in Madison for 13 years. The first speaker talks about how this impacts and benefits minorities. Actually, vast majority of the people who support it always use that term, terms of racial equity lenses and stuff. The problem for me is that these people talk about these things without really consulting the minority folks. They talk about us in the absence, as if we're not present in this city or are not paying attention. This issue here is much bigger. Zoning is a huge thing when you're talking about real estate investment. And changing that should not be taken lightly. The current zoning system we have was well-planned and well-tarted. Yes, we have a housing problem. Yes, we need to adjust our zoning, but we need to do it the right way. There's a right way to do it and there's a wrong way to do it. The wrong way is to try to pass it and adjust few things here and there. The right way is to really put some deep thought into it and reach out to the community and collect thoughts to put it together like we did previously to come up with a comprehensive plan. And that's the right way to do it. Secondly, the key thing with this one is it silences the community. Real estate development has three legs. It's a stool on three legs. You have the city, you have the developer, and you have the community. What this particular one does, it tries to silence the third leg. Community input should always be part of real estate development, and it should not be just put in, as the first speaker said, at the front end. Real estate developers are planning and putting new ideas every year. The communities should also be allowed to adjust their thoughts and respond to each individual development, not like all the city communities should sit and put up a plan and that's the plan we go by while the developers are moving and changing targets. The right way to do it is the way we're doing it now. If you want to develop something, talk to the people that live in that area that are going to be impacted and understand what that means and try to incorporate that. As we mentioned, we have housing problems. But again, it's good to recognize and remember that even though Madison has its problems, we're also one of the best cities. So while we have some challenges, we also have lots of things to be thankful for. If we have a housing problem and we want to address it, let us not fall into this fear-mongering thought process that because we have a housing problem, we are like extremely in a dangerous situation. We are not. It's actually a good thing to be. But let's do it the right way, and let's do it involving the community. The third thing I want to talk about is the impact of changing this zoning. Like I mentioned, zoning is basically the guidelines of how we develop. When you change this zoning code, you are affecting everything from the shadow of buildings to the plants that grow within those shadows, to the butterflies and bees that can live in that ecosystem. It's a very delicate ecosystem that we live in. Changing it significantly should not be taken lightly. And so, I would kindly like to ask for everybody who has the power and right to vote on this to really put more thought into it. I am not against changing zoning, but I'm strongly against the way it's being suggested here. Let's do it the right way, get some serious inputs into it, and do it. That way, it can benefit everybody, and I thank you all.
Do we have Atticus Kerwin, Ruby Owens, or Gary Tippler?
Mayor, we do not, except for Gary. I'm trying to unmute him. But I don't think he's satisfied.
All right. So then I'll let you know also that...
Just unmuted himself.
All right, then Gary Tippler of Jennifer Street. Gary, are you there?
Guess not. You are unmuted on our end, Gary.
I know that Gary has emailed the council several times, so hopefully you all know where he stands. Also want to let you know that we have a few people who are available to answer questions. I think at least some of these folks are here. Jonah Zuckerburns of Hickory, Linda Baumann of Lakeside, Kurt Paulson of Middleton, Justice Castaneda of Dawes Street, and Allison Lindsay Morris of Comanche Way. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Alder Benford.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Linda Leonard, if she's still here.
Do we have Linda Leonard?
Yes.
Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda, for speaking tonight. So I had a question. When you were talking, you mentioned some contradictions to the comprehensive plan. And we've heard many speakers talk about District 6. And to my colleagues, please forgive me if this seems somewhat selfish, but I'm curious, Linda, if you could give us some examples of how this contradicts or conflicts with the comprehensive plan.
Well, in District 6, there were a number of downgrades in intensity that were made during the comprehensive plan process. Williamson Street, for example, was entirely removed as being a growth corridor. And blocks of Williamson that had been proposed as being community mixed use were downgraded to neighborhood mixed use. And the intensity of development that could occur along Williamson is basically a community mixed-use density, not a neighborhood mixed-use density. That same holds true for the Shanks Corner area. It also was downgraded to a neighborhood mixed-use intensity. There were residential areas that were downzoned from, for example, the X Club from medium residential to neighborhood mixed use. Several blocks of residential density were taken down to a lower density. And there is neighborhood mixed-use parcels that are in areas designated on the comp plan as being low residential. And there's also a note in the comp plan about how that there might be able to be denser multifamily properties. However, the note actually limits the densities of these multifamily buildings to 30 units an acre. In the existing 43 that could go on to those, the existing 43 units per acre that could go on to those NMX properties is already higher than that 30, but yet what is being proposed is 86 units per acre. I know this is all kind of nerdy, but... What is also of importance is that the item you referred to, back to Plan Commission, for a former farmland that's being developed is the same sort of situation. It's a situation where it's a low-density area where somebody wants to build TRU2, and the plan has to be changed. The plan, the neighborhood development plan or the comprehensive plan has to be changed in order to be able to do that. But yet, as you've heard from the 222 Mary Street residents tonight, this particular TRU2 property would be able to go to a high density, even though it's the same situation. This ordinance would allow that type of density. So it's inconsistent in terms of not only the comp plan, but also how it's being applied by the city. The TRV2, most of it is in the east part of the Isthmus in the Marquette neighborhood and in the Tennylapum neighborhood. And all of that is protected by a comprehensive plan note that says there should be a maintenance of the house-like character. And yet, 12-unit buildings could be built. And for the most part, it's kind of hard to build a 12-unit building with a house-like character. There's also, for Marquette in particular, is historic preservation is a goal of the comp plan. The comp plan balanced a number of different things. And having 12 units or the other higher densities would be inconsistent with that. The comp plan also recognizes that people interact with the neighborhood based on what buildings look like and that densities can be misleading and that replacement of density maximums in plans and ordinances, replacing density maximums with building heights or mass maximums could lead to more predictable outcomes. But this ordinance upends all of that and turns it over into just relying on density as opposed to what a building would look like. For example, 1121 South Park would be permissible in any mixed-use district. Well, in TSS. And that has 230 feet of street frontage. So those are some of the inconsistencies. The growth priority areas identified in the comp plan were on certain corridors and in activity centers. And there is overlap on some places like East Washington. But other areas like Mineral Point, Odana, South Stoughton Road, Milwaukee Street, which all were growth corridors, are relatively unaffected by this proposed ordinance. So did that sort of answer what you'd like me to answer?
Yes, very much so. Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, Hearing to McKinney. Questions for registrants?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Justice, is Justice on?
I believe he is, Alder. Can we get Justice Castaneda up, please? Go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Justice, I was reviewing the email that you sent to all Alders. And I'd like for you to speak about these three areas. One, you talked about different cities that you had researched related to zoning. The second I'd like for you to speak to in briefly summarizing is your contribution to the RESJ analysis and what that brought forward. And also, what impact will these suggested changes really make in our shortage in housing availability and density? So those are the three. I had more, but let me just use those three.
Okay. Good evening. Appreciate you guys. It's been kind of a succession of simple questions you guys have been grappling with lately. In any case, the first thing about other cities, I think an important thing to note is Wisconsin is a state, you know, the state statutes that back up or prevent municipalities from doing certain things are different state to state. So when you're looking at these, whether it's Minneapolis, I know that there's been a lot done because they kind of came out, but also Sacramento. This is something that's been tinkered with in a lot of different places, many places that do not have the prohibitions on inclusionary zoning that Wisconsin has. So I think it's really important first just to note that, right? Like, and how municipalities are using these tools to address housing stock. It varies from place to place, right, and the impetus behind it. And I think really in a little bit, when we hear from city staff, they'll talk about how they were thinking about this one and why they feel like this is necessary. So that's kind of what you're seeing. I think a general, kind of looking into a lot of the literature, I think that first part is really important to know, that these things are not ubiquitous in terms of their intent and in terms of the way that they speak or respond to other state statutes. I think another really important point is, again, this assumes that there is a goal, you know, of creating more affordability or addressing affordability. I think it's also known that upzoning in and of itself is not an effective housing strategy. And I think that there has to be, you know, just kind of reading from this, you're seeing that in order for it to achieve or to end up with the desired outcomes, it has to be very disciplined and deliberately coupled with a number of other things. And if it isn't there, you know, if you're just thinking about this, and this is a huge broad stroke comment, but you know, the two general things that are huge in terms of increasing affordability and your housing stock is zoning or density and then acquisition costs. And you kind of want to address those things synergistically. And if you don't do that, you're going to fall short. And so I think that's a really big consideration. So generally speaking, that's kind of what you're seeing around the country. The second part, I'm sorry, Alder, I was trying to write it down when you were saying this. Your second question?
The question was around your contribution to the RESJ analysis. And then the third and final one is that what do you, your opinion, based upon your knowledge and input, what impact will these changes actually make in the resolution of affordable housing? And I added a fourth one, and I'll be done. Is that we heard a lot about the lack of public comment or contribution. Where does that lay in how you're seeing this picture that's before us tonight?
Okay, I think I can do the middle two there all at once, the RESJ analysis. You know, I think that the tool itself, I think that the city continues to improve on that process. I've been part of a number of these at this point, and I am continuously impressed by the approach that city staff have taken. And there's a lot of allowance for dissent, and I think that that's really important. I am cautiously optimistic. I do think that there is a concern that I have in that I think a number of people have expressed about what this is going to do, you know, in terms of netting actual affordable units in the designated places. I don't think that the evidence is clear. But I think another thing that we're looking at in, and I mean this for folks that are proponents and also opponents of this ordinance, is that at some point, when you're really getting at the meat of the proposal, again, relative to a number of other proposals, again, whether they're pernicious or, you know, supportive of affordability. what you find is that this isn't, you know, you start finding out that you're you're championing or you're protesting a proposal that doesn't exist. Because I, you know, I know that at this point, uh, the concept of modest, I get that that's triggering and I understand, you know, I think that there's a real concern here. Um, I think the point about not not having robust neighborhood discussion and the idea that that is a uh even being discussed, I I understand how that is affecting a lot of folks. I happen to, you know, when I left, personally, when I left For Profit Development, to I, to come back to Madison, one of the big things is I really was excited about working at a place where um so many of the philosophical tenants around housing are baked into our DNA. And so I, as you know, uh, with the work that we've done on Raymond Road, I mean, we invite, you know, I think we go over, because I I I just think that having robust conversation is, it helps to pride him in that camp, I guess, that really thinks that having a robust dialogue around projects uh is really important for development. Um, so we looked at this and I I think that the there's this kind of giant question mark about the impact and about what will happen because nobody knows, because there's a number of other things that have not been defined. But also, I think we also are recognizing that the status quo, you know, we're always pushing these things off and we're not doing anything. And so like there also is no other uh, I guess, with teeth, there's not a lot of other proposals that are actually trying to to push this forward and trying to push the envelope. And so the status quo isn't going to do it either. Um. Now, what was your last, I'm sorry, Alder, what was the last question?
I think you're summarizing it. You're you're there in terms of um of the public comment you spoke to that. And then you also taught, spoke, you were speaking about the impact that, uh, because we heard throughout the uh the evening, uh, well, these are small minor changes. And so I think you've hit and answered my question. So if you could just kind of summarize and close down, I'd be satisfied with your response.
Yeah, no, I mean, again, it's uh, this is one of those wicked problems. There's no, any solution and way forward is going to preserve the number of other challenges for us. And it really, you know, if we go one way or the other, if we don't, we have every, well, well, then what then? And there is, uh, I think, some truth in um, a- again, it's it's not neighborhood meetings. It has to do with the the city review process that that takes a lot of time. And so just as a low-income housing developer, your holding costs and a lot of the um earnest money and all these things that you have to do can get a bit exorbitant. And many of our low-income housing developers are undercapitalized to begin with. And there's another conversation I could throw in here about philosophy behind land banking. Essentially, you already have a number of land banks in Madison. They just aren't capitalized right now. All that to say, though, uh, it's, it isn't clear that this is going to do either any of these things. I, by the way that it's written and by the actual effect of what it's going to do, I don't think it's going to, I know it is not going to increase, radically increase the affordable housing stock. On the flip side, it also is not a way to radically or aggressively increase density. It doesn't do either of those things. And for, I think this was already brought up, uh, I do encourage folks to read a number of the things that are alleged, but it, it also, you know, for a number of these big kind of, you know, the larger developments, it's, it's, it does not get you out of the review process. And I think that that's a really important point. So sorry that uh, I don't mean to be unequivocal or or I'm sorry, I don't mean to equivocate so much.
Thank you. I'm satisfied with your response.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have two questions, one for former Alder Rommel and then a question for Justice, you can stay tuned.
Do you want to um take uh Justice's question first, Alder, since he's with us?
Well, um, yeah, I, I, Justice, um, I'm not sure. Well, and thank you for your comments and thank you for the email that you sent over to everybody. I appreciate it. Um, Alder Rommel sent I an email as well and number six and uh Alder Rommel's uh recommendation or her points in her email, she recommends that the city convene a C D D Community Development Division work group to work with small nonprofit and BIPOC developers to learn about the barriers they face, how their numbers pencil out, how to address pre-development costs and other impediments, and change policy based on real data. In addition to the land use conditional use process, there is a parallel community development funding process to complete for city affordable housing grants. If the issue is to reduce development review time and reduce holding costs for small-scale nonprofit developers, let's focus on that. My question to you, Justice, and and it really does relieve me of the need to to talk to Marcia about it. I was asked, going to ask her more her thoughts about how this work group would function. But um, Justice, maybe you can give me an idea if you at Commonwealth, working with other uh nonprofit developers in the third sector, if you agree that this uh work group would be helpful uh in order that we could flesh out the other aspects of the Housing Forward Initiative and put more teeth into the various components of what we want to do moving forward. So quite simply, do you, would you welcome such a work group?
Yeah, and it already kind of exists, I guess, uh, Alder Evers. Uh, you know, the third sector is there, um. Yeah, I've been sharing that now for two years, so I don't get to participate much. But the, there are other people who are, uh, you know, very dedicated folks. I I guess collectively, you know, it's, it's great, you know. I I think coming and hearing what that experience is like, I think we have a very, you know, there's some dynamic thinkers, many of them are on this call. Many of them have participated in this discussion that are involved in low-income housing development. My predecessor, Mary Ann Morton, one of my favorite quotes from her is that if you're doing low-income housing correctly, you're not going to make any money on it. And I think that that's a really important um factor. So people have brought up that when people say that a project isn't feasible, what it means is they're not going to be able to maximize value off it. I do think that there's some truth in some of that, but uh I think hearing from us, I think they, we've been working for a long time. But I think what the city is recognizing, the staff, at least what's been, you know, kind of communicated to us, um, is that the clip at which we're creating units collectively isn't where it needs to be in order for us to meet the demand. And this is something that I think as a group, we really do need to address. So we would invite that conversation. I do invite uh you all to come chat to us. And I should acknowledge the support that uh the Community Development Division, uh, the Net Roads in particular has put into keeping, you know, working and and being there and being present to hear out a lot of us so well. We definitely would invite you all to uh to come chat.
All right. Thank you, Justice. And I will briefly ask Alder Rommel a question and proceed it with um.
When he wanted Miles.
Uh, uh, thanking her for showing up and inviting her to come back anytime. Her wisdom and experience is valuable, I think, to all of us. Um, I, I think that uh your comments are well-made and your concerns are well-made. Um, uh, do you think this is redeemable if this were to be placed on file for further review so we could do more work on this and bring it back? Alder Rommel, do you see some value in that to continue working on uh these suggested changes?
Questions, and of course, that's when you come. Oh, they want me to share.
Okay, um, unmuted me. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I I I have just had guests arrive, so I missed some of Alder Evers' um questions. Sorry. Could you repeat it?
Uh, yes, uh, thanking you for the email that you sent out asking if uh if your suggestion is that we continue working on this and that perhaps if we were to place this on file, not for the purpose of defeating it altogether, recognizing there are some, there are some very good components to this, but that we could continue working on this and bring this back to council at a later date. Is that what you're suggesting?
You know, whether you place it on file or refer it to the Plan Commission for more work or or a work group, you know, I think that's your decision, but I I guess I'm hoping that you don't approve it at this point. And those, how you get to that decision is up to you. I mean, I think, as you say, there's some good points to this ordinance. Like I said in my remarks and in my letter, I think so- some of the residential zoning could be helpful, but you know, I don't, but it will be modest. But in order for it to really work, it needs to have that input of the nonprofits, small-scale developers and BIPOC developers to see what would help them. So, you know, I I defer to your best judgment, everybody. But if placing it on file would not make people feel they failed, that sounds good to me. I want you to think you're moving the the, you know, the, you're moving the ball down the field. But this might be the way to do that.
Thank you.
President Abbas.
Thank you. Question for Justice?
Hello.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so uh appreciate for being here and sharing so much information uh for knowledge of my colleague as well as people who are listening. I'm just curious to hear, you mentioned about there is a burden, a financial burden because of the lengthy process of city approval. I'm curious to hear if you can share how the nonprofit development process works because I know your process is a little different than the market rate because you also have to go through C D G V, C D B, Community Development Program, I mean. So could you please talk about the whole process? How does that work and how long the time take?
Uh, we, we don't, we don't need to per se. We, we do because a lot of the money we get is subsidized. It's, you know, it's home funds, it's funds from HUD or through C D B G when it isn't uh, you know, when we're not pursuing Affordable Housing Fund to supplement other task credit projects and such. So um, the, the, the real thing here is that a lot of us, you know, you're, you're just not. So the holding costs, when you, when you, first thing is that we have to compete with a market uh for property. So a lot of the um, it's like off-list, if you will, but it's stuff that's not listed. And so we have to go out and get, you know, working on uh, you know, a lot of the acquisition conversations, we're out there in the same place that people who have a lot deeper pockets. Because again, the only way that a low-income housing provider has to increase their revenue was to increase rents, which is antithetical to our mission in the first place. So you're kind of in this situation where you have to get out there and work with uh folks who are sympathetic to the cause in order to acquire the property in the first place. Now, when you get an option on a property, there's a, it depends on the type of funding. So I mean, it, there's so many things that affect the process and like the, the, the rhythm, if you will, that you go into with the city. But as soon as you, you know, if you get an option on something and you say it's forty-eight months, and I'm just throwing this out there, it's a, a real project, um. There are a number of things that you have to go through in that time. Now, you're paying money every month to hold the property. So if you end up in a situation where Justice is going through a city review process that takes many, many months, you're paying the earnest payments on that acquisition and, you know, for your option over that period. That's kind of what I'm talking about. Now, that doesn't, you know, and you guys, I mean, the boards, commissions, the committee thing is a different conversation for a different uh, different day. But that could be, like ostensibly, you could also accelerate that. So you could address that specifically for low-income housing developers so that the process is uh is accelerated that way. But otherwise, what you're waiting for is for all these meetings to happen and, you know, in your natural or the normal rhythm of the committee structures, that sometimes can take a long time. So that's uh quid pro quo as to what I, what I'm speaking to. Again, I um, you know, I don't know what everyone else is. My, you know, and it's, it's relatively short. I've been here for fifty-four months. Um, and and doing work in Madison, but I don't know that uh the neighborhood has been the issue so much as, you know, I don't, I, you know, we happen to have really great relationships with the neighborhood associations that we work in. Even when we don't, don't agree, I I think it's always been a really productive conversation. So um, yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, since, since we have Justice on the line, I just have a quick question for Justice is my, my first question. Um, I, uh, Justice, I, I don't want to put words in your mou- your mouth, nor do I think I can, but uh, you know, in reading your email and hearing your good comments, um, I I hear kind of a mixed bag is, is your evaluation of this. But one of the things that struck me is that I I felt like you were also saying doing nothing should not be an option. That doesn't mean you love what this proposal is, but uh i- is it, is it wrong to summarize some of what you said as doing nothing is a bad option? And uh, doing this particular proposal, enacting this particular proposal, uh, you know, as standalone is not a great thing, that we have all these other components in, in what the city is trying to do to address not just affordability. I mean, you really focused on affordability, even though this proposal is mostly not about affordability, it's about housing stock. Yet we all say we don't want to displace and we don't want to gentrify. Uh, you, you're, you're kind of, I, 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 I hear you saying that it's not a, uh, this is a step to take, but we need to take so many more steps in order to prevent some of the nefarious possibilities of what could occur, occur otherwise. Is, is that a good summary or am I putting words in your mouth?
Yes, the only, I just would make a clarification. I don't, I, I don't know that hypothetically, if you guys were to choose not to go this route, I don't think that that amounts to doing nothing. I think the point here, and I think where a lot of people's frustration, see this conversation about it not being affordable, about affordability, I don't know that that was the most, let's just say, tactical messaging strategy when it seems to be one of the bigger issues facing our metro area. And maybe the biggest issue as it pertains to housing is the lack of affordable housing. So to say that it's not about that, I think a lot of housing advocates are like, well, why are we having this conversation? If it's not about affordability, what are we talking about? Um, so I think that the, the point, though, is like, you know, again, in not to, I don't want to get, you know, overly pedantic with this, but I think we need a comprehensive and we need a very disciplined, deliberate and aggressive strategy to increase the affordable housing. I will say the low-income housing stock in Madison. And that um, what we have right now without this change or without anything else is not that. We do not have that plan that's not in place. I think with the annexation, uh, Maya Pearson brought us some really great com- uh, comments about Park Street and what is going to happen when the annexation happens of the town of Madison, what that's going to do for property values. We're going to need very, very sharp, disciplined and direct policy solutions to prevent that type of displacement. So I don't, I, I would just say that I, I, I would caution against that, kind of that false pragmatism that like, you know, because, you know, the, don't let the better or the best get in the way, the better or whatever. I don't think that this is that. I just think if we are not doing anything, you know, every year it's going by and every year it's getting tighter and tighter for a lot of the folks who are living in our housing.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate what you said and and I hope we can do a lot more in the future and extend the efforts we currently have going. Uh, Mayor, I also have a question for Kurt Paulson, if that's okay?
Absolutely, Alder. Can we get Kurt Paulson, please? Um, go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. Uh, Kurt, uh, uh, thanks for the communications that you sent us back in March with anal- your analyses of these proposed changes. Um, I wondered if, since it's been a while, if you could just very briefly summarize that input. And in particular, um, I, 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 I know you gave uh some examples from particular uh types of parcels in particular zoning districts, but maybe uh that that were really valuable. But uh, also to, I, I mean, in particular, I'd like to hear about your general conclusion about the potential impacts, uh, positive or negative of this proposal.
Uh, thank you, Alder Heck. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so there's a couple of questions you asked there. So to summarize the letter, uh, for a lot of the, because the zoning proposal uh has a number of moving parts, I tried to separate them out. So for a lot of the residential districts, uh, the SRV twos, for example, which seems to be one of the dominant parcel types, um, that is under consideration, the change in density would, um, for a ten-thousand-square-foot parcel, for example, would only change um slightly the number of units that would be permitted on those parcels. So uh, for example, only to go from five dwelling units to six-point-seven. So for at least a lot of the existing residential zoning districts, um, that change in density and the change in the conditional use would probably not be enough to see widespread um redevelopment of all of those. to see widespread redevelopment of all of those parcels. So that was one of the conclusions. The other was focusing on the conditional use threshold, which again, because of changes in state law a few years ago, I think a lot of people have the idea that conditional use means it's conditional. We might, we might not, it depends. But conditional use is really means that it's subject to conditions specified in the ordinance, which if the developer agrees to meet, the city shall grant the permit. So there's a couple of those issues. And then I think the third issue was, there was a concern in some of the mixed use districts that the conditional use threshold for single, for residential only would lead to the systematic removal of all of the non-residential uses in the mixed use districts. And the examples I gave in the letter showed that that's very unlikely because it's just too costly to do that parcel by parcel. Many of those auto-oriented, older strip centers, for example, would probably be redeveloped through a rezoning, conditional use or a PDD process.
Okay.
I think those were your questions, right?
Right. And so I don't know if, is it appropriate to say in summary that you think that changes are not as impactful as what some may think?
Right. So the changes are in different categories. So the density changes by themselves would be in every residential district and in the mixed use district, with the exception of the TRU2. That's a somewhat unique case. That the change in the density standards and the change in the conditional use threshold would unlikely lead to a large amount of new by right construction on parcels that have existing housing. Simply because for a developer to acquire that parcel at the existing cost, knock down the housing and move from, for example, 10 units to 14 is not economically viable in, in most cases. It would allow perhaps for vacant parcels or for underutilized commercial parcels or parking lots for, again, the smaller developer, which could include nonprofits, to acquire some parcels to build infill housing. So I think there's two issues, right? One is, does it make infill housing easier? And the second is, is the economic change sufficient to redevelop existing housing? I think the infill could happen and the redevelopment of existing housing is unlikely at that scale because the conditional use thresholds still do not allow you to alter the underlying density or height requirements. So most developers, if they're going to bother with acquiring and assembling parcels, are going to want to go much higher and many more units, which again, would not be on the conditional use, would probably be a PDD rezoning.
Thanks. I think those last couple of summaries that you made clarified it for me. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Alder. I do not have any other Alders wishing to ask questions of registrants. So we'll turn then, excuse me, I will close the public hearing, first of all, and we'll turn to staff. I think Heather Stoudt has a short presentation for us and then we'll do questions of staff.
All right. Thank you so much, Mayor and Common Council. It's good to be with you all again on this topic. First, I want to say that I've enjoyed meeting with many of you over the last several weeks to really dig into these changes and hear more about your questions, your concerns and really explore the issues together. So thank you for that time. Tonight, I do have a few slides that I've added just recently to help clarify some things that were discussed already this evening. But I want to try to go pretty quickly here through the policy context. And then again, the location and really try to show the magnitude of the proposed changes. And then I have plenty of examples of particular properties that I'm not going to present, but that will be available if folks have questions and want to see some tangible examples of what could happen in certain zoning districts. We can delve into those as well. So kicking it off here, just the large scale policy context of what has been proposed. I want to first set the stage with the Housing Forward package. So as you'll see here, highlighted in green, the ordinance changes that are proposed really do relate most closely to this first point within the Housing Forward package. And that's to increase housing choice. This is indeed an ordinance to try to make, an ordinance change to try to make it easier to increase our housing supply when we know it is so badly needed. That's just an increase in the number of units citywide. But it happens within the context of many other things that the city is focused on with related to creating affordable housing, directly subsidizing affordable housing and combating displacement and segregation as well and the other items in this Housing Forward package. Within this number one piece, the increasing housing choice, you can see that this is really the second bullet here. Make adjustments to the zoning code to enable construction of more housing in the city. And I want to ground it also in other recently adopted plans. The Comprehensive Plan, the city's analysis of impediments to fair housing choice and the Equitable Development Report. And all three of these plans, which were adopted in 2018 and 2019 by the council, this explicitly was recommended to explore adjustments to these things. The number of dwelling units, which is the allowable densities, building size, height thresholds, the thresholds between permitted and conditional uses. Two, increase allowable density for residential buildings in our mixed use and residential zoning districts. So again, this recommendation comes explicitly to you from predecessors and some of you who are here this evening that were members of the council back in 2018 and 2019. When we did the city's Conference of Plan, we did a very robust public engagement process reaching about 15,000 Madisonians representing the makeup of our city. We followed the demographic data and ensured that those that participated really did represent Madison as a whole. By and large, the loudest thing we heard through that entire process was that we need more housing choices in Madison. And the Public Engagement Plan was really based on a resgi analysis that was done years ago now, back in 2016, that really showed us that what we needed to do is something very different than what we've done before for public engagement. We actually created and were able to help pay facilitators to bring together sustained focus groups from our underrepresented groups across the city, some of which are listed here, to really be with us for 18 months throughout the engagement process, learn about what was happening within the Conference of Plan process, what the city strategies were, and to really share their own priorities and rank the city strategies in a variety of things. And this one is really important. I want to stress here that among the resident panels alone, which were these sustained focus groups made up of individuals from our underrepresented groups in Madison, those who don't typically participate in planning processes, within those resident panel groups, the first priority of many drafted strategies in the neighborhoods and housing section was just this, to ensure that we have a sufficient supply of rental housing to reduce housing costs and provide more choices. So again, I want to stress that this was the top priority by the resident panels among all of the different ways we gained input from the community. This was the one that they identified as the number one housing priority. Now, within the Conference of Plan, we have many housing-related strategies. Some on the left here relate to funding efforts. They impact the city's budget. The Affordable Housing Fund is an enormous one, but also homeownership assistance and also land banking, which you'll discuss later tonight. What does the city take an active role in funding and supporting moving forward? And then on the flip side, we have several recommendations in the Conference of Plan to look at our regulatory framework and make changes to make housing easier to construct and to really focus on that supply side. Here in the green is really what we're focused on with the ordinances that are before you tonight. We've already, as a city, created the Regional Mixed Use Zoning District. And we've made it much easier for housing cooperatives to be constructed across the city and converted across the city. We're still tackling accessory dwelling units likely to start later this year. And these are all regulatory efforts that don't involve the city budget process. And, you know, importantly, the city will not likely be throwing money at market rate housing. We don't foresee that as a political reality in Madison, certainly not expecting that. But still, there are things that we can do as a city on that supply side to make it easier to construct housing of small and mid-scale so that we can help with the regulatory environment to help nudge that housing supply up. Now, this is not meant to really dive into the content, but I want to be sure that you know that this is happening amidst many, many other things that are recommended in the Conference of Plan related to housing. Here in green are the ordinances that are before you tonight. These are Conference of Plan recommendations exactly recommending what's before you tonight. But in yellow are the many other things that the city is already tackling that are already in progress, having to do with other housing initiatives in the city. Similarly, the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice, which was prepared by the Community Development Division, has many, many recommendations. In green are the ones that explicitly relate to what's before you this evening. And in yellow are the other things that are in progress today coming out of this Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Report that the council adopted back in 2019. And then finally, I mentioned the Equitable Development in Madison Report that was also accepted in late 2019. Recommendations to do precisely what's before you this evening are in that report as well, among many other things. Very recently, with requests from a few of you, we took a deeper dive approach into a resgi analysis just looking at the ordinances that are before you this evening. That was led by Lynette Rhodes in the Community Development Division. And she and others participating in that analysis are here this evening and can help address questions about it. Now, just diving into the districts themselves. Here again is the city's whole zoning map that shows that really the city is divided into 40 odd zoning districts, each of which have a list of permitted uses and conditional uses by zoning district. We have a host of residential districts, mixed use and commercial, employment, industrial, parks and recreation, et cetera. But all of them have a list of permitted uses that can be accomplished by right through a permit process that involves staff from several agencies, but no boards, committees or commissions with discretionary review. And then conditional uses, which go to the city's Plan Commission for a decision. And we've heard a little bit tonight about those two different processes. And I do want to stress here that permitted uses move forward with careful review by city zoning, traffic engineering, fire, engineering and other agencies. But they don't see the planning staff at all. I know that was mentioned this evening, that planning staff would be able to dictate the details of what moves forward. And I just want to be straightforward that the planning staff doesn't even see permitted uses. But we have a very strong detailed zoning code that I think we can rely upon to get great results through the permitted use process. And then conditional uses are indeed reviewed by staff. They often do involve neighborhood input at a series of meetings, although that's not required. It's just the norm in Madison that, you know, once a developer arrives at Plan Commission, many times there are questions asked about what sort of process did you involve the surrounding residents in as you were bringing this to the Plan Commission? And many of you, as Alders, are very familiar with the variety of processes around conditional uses. So as we've said, one of the main thrusts of the zoning ordinance changes before you this evening is to recalibrate or make slight changes to the conditional use thresholds so that we're allowing more housing to be built by right or as a permitted use. And we really, the way that the ordinance changes are proposed, it's focused on small to mid-scale multifamily housing. And so again, it's that shift from conditional to permitted. And this is an important slide I really want you to take a look at. This helps to understand the order of magnitude regarding what's being proposed. If we look back over the last five years at the nearly 11,000 housing units that have been approved in Madison, these proposed changes from conditional to permitted would have only impacted 3.6% of those proposals. So I really want you to take a close look at this and understand it. That, you know, we've heard a lot this evening about neighborhood voice and we all think that that is important, believe me. As a staff team, we spend hours and hours and hours helping to facilitate neighborhood meetings. It's a critical part of the way that development moves forward in Madison. These proposed changes, again, looking back, would impact less than 4% of the multifamily housing units approved over the last five years. Now, we certainly hope that with these changes, we might be able to nudge that number up a little bit. And that would mean that we're seeing more small and mid-scale housing move forward. Right now, I would say that we, a lot of our housing is bifurcated and relatively large multifamily and mixed use buildings. And we'd certainly like to see more of that missing middle scale to look at where those approvals have happened over the past five years. So it's pretty well distributed throughout the city. And then the second thing that the proposals do is to make modest adjustments to allow for greater residential densities. And this is regardless of whether something falls in a permitted use bucket or a conditional use realm, but a goal on property. And this is just a 200-foot property where 20 unit building could be constructed today. With the, and these density increases are consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. You know, again, here are the residential districts that we're talking about within the city. About 5% of the city's land area, it's seen approximately 20% of our growth over the past five years. And here are the proposed density changes. You can see that the proposal increases the density in these districts, the V, the varied districts, the TRB and SRV districts, up to 29 dwelling units per acre, which is in line with the Conference of Plan ranges. Similarly, in the TRU1 district, the density increases up to 58 dwelling units per acre, right in this range. And then within the TRU2 district, the density recommendation is up to 124 dwelling units per acre. Here are our mixed use districts, and these are the three districts that the proposed changes would apply to. Now, they take up about 2% of the city's land area, but they've seen over a quarter of our multifamily housing approvals over the last five years. So this is where the bulk, I guess, you know, on a per acre scale of our city's growth is happening. And that's what we think is actually perfectly appropriate. If you look at the Growth Priority Areas map shown in the Conference of Plan, all of these corridors with the arrows back and forth and all of the centers that you see here are exactly where we want our growth to be focused over the next 20 years. And I'll just overlay these mixed use zoning districts onto the map here. And you'll see that there is a lot of similarity between the placement of our mixed use districts and the growth areas in the Comprehensive Plan. And a similar density check here for you to take a look at and we can come back to if you need. Within the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, the allowable density for residential buildings is proposed to be 58 dwelling units per acre, which is in line with the proposed density range in this neighborhood mixed use, future land use. And then similarly, within the Community Mixed Use arena, the density limitations that are proposed are increased to 87 and 124 dwelling units per acre respectively in these two zoning districts. And I'll end there just by noting the formal review process that picked up in February and now is before you this evening for a decision following recommendations by the Housing Strategy Committee and Plan Commission. And you have before you this evening the Plan Commission substitute and then also two separate alternates that I do have just a little bit of staff analysis on, should you have any questions about those. And with that, I think I'll kick it open to any questions and discussion and mention that many colleagues are here to take your questions as well. We have Matt Walker, Lynette Rhodes, Matt Tucker, John Strange, Matt Mikulajewski and others are here, should you have questions for me or for any of our colleagues.
Thank you, Heather. Alder Evers, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Professor Paulson referenced TRU2 and so did former Alder Bremel. And Professor Paulson kind of referred it to as an anomaly. And I'm guessing, I'm wondering why the permitted units or the threshold changed so dramatically up to 60. And the second part of the question, would you And the second part of the question, would you do you think it might make sense, as Alder Rama suggested, that we amend that and we bring that down to something like thirty six or twenty four? Could you give us first the reason, the rationale for why it's such a dramatic increase?
Sure. So the TRU two district is a fairly rare zoning district in the city. There's about seventy four acres total in the city that are zoned TRU two, a mix of centrally located and peripherally located properties. And by and large, we see very large developments on the TRU two sites today. And so I think by very large, I mean, you know, one hundred plus units are typical within those districts. But they're not ubiquitous. There are some smaller properties that are zoned TRU two. And I think that the Plan Commission felt comfortable with changing that threshold up to sixty units per acre. But if the council decided to look at something more like thirty six, forty eight, you know, with parity with what you're seeing in some of the mixed use districts for purely residential buildings, I think that's something that staff would be comfortable with. And again, that would be just a change to that permitted versus conditional use threshold. So that could make sense if the council wanted to consider that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Benford. Questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Heather, for the overview. I had a couple of questions for you. And with the presentation, I'm making the assumption that so much time has been put into this, not only by you, but folks in your division, but folks across many departments. Would you say that's fair? I can't imagine the hours. Lots and lots of hours in discussion, right?
Sure. I think that's fair to say. I think it's been part of the COVID Housing Recovery Team effort. It's multi-agency and certainly a focused effort within PCED or Planning, Community and Economic Development.
So I just had another question. You no doubt heard many people that live at Mary Street. And full disclosure, when my beautiful eight-year-old son's not with me, he lives in that building. So alders that might not know, when you stand across the Yehara from Mickey's, you can see this apartment building. What would you say, Heather, with some of the folks that called with deep concerns that twenty two units with this plan? What do you envision that could look like, not only for that apartment building, but for the amazing folks that live on Mary Street? And I ask that knowing that you're a D sixer. I renamed us all in District Six. We're all D sixers. So I ask you that knowing that you have a vested interest in that area.
Sure, sure. Well, I think that that property is zoned TRU two, if I'm not mistaken. And I can say that from the Planning Division side of things, we haven't heard any interest in redevelopment of that property in recent years. I did hear some things tonight that made it seem like the current property owner was interested in pursuing redevelopment. That's not something that we've learned anything about yet as staff. And so I don't know, Alder, if you're in the loop on that or have spoken with the owner. But that's not something that we're aware of as staff. My sense on that property itself is that it is one of the smallest, probably one of the smaller buildings within that TRU two zoning district. And that a couple of different ways forward might be helpful. I think it's a bit of an anomaly within the TRU two area, if you look at the city as a whole. One would be what we just discussed, I think what Alder Evers suggested, that maybe ratcheting back the number of units that could be accomplished as a permitted use there. Or, you know, as an alder, from TRU two to TRU one, that would be available to the city as well to consider. So those are two ideas that I think could be helpful for that property.
So you mentioned it could be helpful, but would you acknowledge that without those considerations, more thought about lowering the density, could you acknowledge that that would really drastically change Mary Street or am I being presumptuous?
Well, I don't think the passage of these ordinances equate to instant redevelopment. And I think there's been a lot of concern raised about what could happen without really an economic check of what actually is economically feasible. I mean, you know, I'm not the owner of that property, certainly. But I think far more likely than demolishing and redeveloping that property would be investment in the existing units, you know, bringing those existing units up to current market standards. And that's something that, again, we haven't heard anything about, nor did we have any involvement in. But I think an investment in those units and bringing them up to market standards and likely increased rents would be far more likely than a demolition and new building there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Miazze.
Yes, I just wanted to know if you had the quick picture of the demographic race, according to race, of how, when you did the study in two thousand and sixteen?
Yeah, the Comprehensive Plan. I do, it will take me a while, I would need to get on the VPN and do some digging in order to bring that up, but it's something I can bring up to show you. At each phase, what we tried to do is track the demographics of those who were participating in the process. And we did that by asking them at community meetings. So it was all by, you know, by the people participating. It was optional, certainly, to fill out any demographic information. Same goes for those who are participating online on the city's website. They were also asked to provide their demographic information. And then within the resident panels that I mentioned, they were also asked to provide demographic information. And so what we were able to do is track all of the demographic information that was provided and display that against the data of the demographic makeup of the city as a whole. The reason we did that for the three different phases of the Conference of Plan Public Engagement was that we wanted to know after Phase One, if we needed to make if we needed to make certain changes to better reach certain demographics, we wanted to know that. The council at the time agreed that that should be our plan, that we should have a check and a move forward, you know, based on the demographics that we needed to reach more. What we found, and I think this is largely due to the strategy to engage with resident panels, is that the folks participating in the Conference of Plan process throughout generally represented the demographics of Madison as a whole.
All right, if you get the information, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Alder, there's also a wealth of information at the Imagine Madison website. You can actually see for each stage what the feedback was. And at a quick look, it doesn't have the specific demographics, which I'm sure Heather will share. But just so you know, that there is a lot at the Imagine Madison website. Alder Foster, questions for staff?
Yeah, for Heather as well. Heather, you know, kind of one of my primary concerns with this proposal is the potential negative impact on commercial corridors. And I guess, you know, in your presentation that you shared, there were a lot of references to how this, changes like this were called for in the Comp Plan. I didn't see any reference to the Neighborhoods and Housing section of the Comp Plan. And my read of that seems to really focus on this idea of complete neighborhoods with access to commercial amenities for nearby adjacent neighborhoods. What is your, how do you understand that section? And how do you kind of hold this proposal intention with that, with that sort of group of recommendations in the Comp Plan?
Sure, great question. Comp Plan is just out of reach over here. But I think that in short, my answer would be that in a lot of these neighborhoods where the recommendation is to support a more active, complete and walkable neighborhood, one of the key missing ingredients right now is housing at any scale. There's a lot of low-density housing, maybe a few apartment buildings and some fairly underutilized commercial sites that may have a one-story building and a large parking lot. I think that as the Conference of Plan was being created, we recognized a tremendous opportunity to accommodate the city's growth along those underutilized commercial sites in areas already well-served by transit. Because, you know, not only is there available space in an area where we have strong public infrastructure, but also the growth of, you know, more housing units in some of these neighborhoods can really help to make the commercial that's there and new commercial more successful. So it creates like a whole walking, you know, walkable and mixed use environment for the future. So I think that's my short answer on that. And then, of course, in the Land Use and Transportation section, there were far more explicit recommendations about really trying to accommodate our growth along these commercial and underutilized corridors.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me. And as you know, I'm supportive of bringing added density in. I think my concerns are around the recommendation to allow straight residential without any commercial on the first floor that's being put forward. And how do you square that with the potential damage that it could do to those commercial corridors?
Yeah, so I still think that even with these changes, we're going to see the vast majority of housing development that comes into the city will probably be still on the larger scale. We'll be working with developers that we've been working with for years. New developers will come to the city that are capitalized and willing to take risks. So I think for those developments that are on the larger scale, the substitute that was forwarded by the Plan Commission really tackles that head on and, you know, ensures that at a certain number of units, you really must have, well, if you want to avoid the conditional use process, that is, then you must have ground floor commercial space included within your building. But I think for the smaller scale development, which again, I don't think we're going to see long stretches of very small scale development, because I think there's still enough developers out there that are going to focus on the large scale. But this will provide opportunities for folks who may not be as well capitalized to come in and purchase a small property along a mixed use stretch and do a twelve, twenty unit, twenty unit building. That, I guess, my, you know, my thought is that really won't take away from the walkability and the long-term sort of magnetism that these commercial corridors need to have moving forward.
So basically, you're just thinking it probably won't, it would be permitted to happen, but it probably wouldn't happen just based on sort of market conditions is what you're?
Well, I'm thinking that we won't see long stretches of the small buildings being constructed. I think it's going to be still, unfortunately, I mean, you saw over the last ten thousand plus units, that less than four percent of them were kind of at the scale that we're talking about. What we hope is that we still, we see more of those smaller scale developments moving forward. But I don't think it's realistic to think that they're going to be the vast majority of what we see. So I guess I don't share the fear that an entire street frontage will be dotted with small residential buildings. I think there will still be a really healthy mix of mixed use buildings. And now we'll just have the ability to support the smaller scale developer who, A, you know, can't carry the land costs process-wise, but B, and especially, can't carry the cost of an unleasable ground floor commercial space. Those are so much easier to absorb in the larger development projects than they would be on the smaller scale.
Thank you. I had a question on the Equitable Development in Madison White Paper. And I was happy to see you reference that. I hadn't seen it come up in the previous information. So I think in your presentation, you said that that explicitly called for the changes before us tonight. I was reviewing that white paper and I remember reviewing it on EDC back in two thousand and nineteen when it was prepared. So there is a section that says adjust zoning standards. And I don't know if you recall this or not, but it says there was another alternative is that the city could consider pursuing, expediting the permitting process by fast-tracking land use approvals for affordable housing development to accelerate the addition of new affordable housing units. Do you know if that was ever pursued?
We did discuss it with the Plan Commission back in July of two thousand and twenty, so almost a year ago now. And we'd like to continue to work with the Attorney's Office and CDD to try to explore any opportunities we might have to do that. I know you've spoken with the Attorney's Office a lot about this issue. And it's tough to utilize zoning in a way that differentiates the type of housing based on the level of affordability. But we are still continuing to discuss it as a staff team and hope that we might be able to bring forward some ideas that are legal in the state to pursue.
And at the end of that white paper, there was a table of strategies, some that we're currently using, some that were recommended by the white paper that we implement and some that were preempted by state law. I don't know, I'm thinking you might recall when we passed that resolution. I mean, I think you and I actually had some conversations about this. And, you know, one of my concerns at the time, I thought it was a really, really strong paper that was really focused around this question of preventing gentrification displacement, which seemed to be at the heart of a lot of what we're talking about tonight. We actually, the council changed that resolution and explicitly directed staff to come back to council with a priorities list of those recommendations, of those that would have the greatest impact. And do you, did that just fall off the radar or whatever happened with that? Because it seems to really capture what we've heard tonight about like, why this? Why this now, absent anything else? It's not being put forward with anything else that's actually going to address affordable housing or deal with gentrification displacement. The council specifically said, okay, here's a list of things you told us might work. Come back to us with a list of these things that are prioritized so we can give direction. And instead, a couple of years later, we get this sort of zoning thing. Can you help me understand how we got here?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm surprised that you feel like this is happening absent anything else. I mean, I think, you know, on the council agenda this evening, there's the land banking policy that you'll see as number one fifteen on the agenda. Colleagues in economic development and community development have been working very hard on that. Also, we as PCED as a whole, and not in the Planning Division, have worked really hard at examining the use of the city's Affordable Housing Fund, responding to alders who want to make sure that we're using that tool as a way to support smaller scale housing. And I think, you know, Lynette Rhodes is here and might be able to answer that question. But I think, you know, we certainly are as staff, working on many fronts based on the recommendations in the three housing-related plans that I showed. And this certainly isn't meant in any way to appear before the council in a vacuum. There's many other things that we as a city, based on council decisions, are taking on with regard to shaping our affordable housing and land banking strategies just to move to.
Thanks. I appreciate there's other things in the works, but I guess I'm referencing specifically these things that were meant to address gentrification displacement, which is, we've heard from so many people tonight. And there were strategies listed that said, right next to adjusting zoning standards, housing levy, developer exemptions, retain expiring subsidy units, community benefit agreements. There's a whole list. And again, the council passed, like, accepted that report and said, please come back to us with a prioritized list, recommendations of what we can do to really tackle this and get ahead of it. And I'm not, I mean, what is it going to take to get that work to happen? Because to me, voting for these zoning changes, absent any of those other things, is not wise. And so I'm trying to figure out how do we, you're talking about things that staff have initiated, but the council, as you've referenced many times, we gave very specific direction on this front. And it seems like it's fallen through the cracks. Is it something that we can pick back up?
Sure, it is something that we can pick back up.
Great. I have a question for Attorney Strange. Attorney Strange, one thing that hasn't been discussed about tonight is, it's been mentioned just briefly, but the impact on demolition. Can you explain how these proposed changes would potentially change how demolition approval happens in Madison?
Well, nothing about these changes affects the demolition ordinance itself. So everything would still need to go through the So everything would still need to go through the demolition process. Um, the only thing that um would change is not so much of a change, but as, as the council knows, um, the current demolition ordinance contains uh a provision that, excuse me, the, the current demolition ordinance contains a provision um that allows the plan commission to take into account a proposed future use, even it's, even if it is a permitted use. Um, and as we talked about at a previous council meeting, um, it's our office's opinion that that's uncon, it's, that's an illegal provision that we can't allow the demolition ordinance to um deny what is otherwise a permitted use. Uh, so that's, that's one thing about the demolition ordinance that needs to change at some point. Um, it's still in there. So in theory, if, if one of these, um, if a, if a proposal went through for a permitted use, uh, whether it's because of these ordinances or any other, and the plan commission um tried to deny that proposed use on the basis just on the demolition ordinance, I don't think that they could legally do that. Um, so that's, but, but this ordinance doesn't change the, the need for the proposal to go through um the demolition process. It's just that the count, the plan commission, just like any other use, cannot use um the demolition ordinance to deny an otherwise permitted use.
Thank you. And um another question on the conditional use standards. So, you know, I heard from a lot of folks tonight that seemed pretty confused about it and this idea that, you know, we're sort of taking input and decision-making away from, from the public and putting it in the hands of staff. And I think as, as Ms. Stoudt mentioned, you know, planning division staff in particular are, you know, they're not even reviewing things that are part of the permitted uh use process. Can you just explain the difference between the, the standards that are um looked at during the conditional use process and how that compares or contrasts to the permitted use process?
Sure. Well, with a permitted use, um, the, the applicant goes through a site plan review process um that, that just ensures that everything that they're proposing to do is consistent with the zoning code. Um, and if they have a permitted use, then they're looking at thing, the, the general regulations of the zoning code and the other things that are, that apply to all uses regardless of their, if they're conditional. With a conditional use, there is um a whole, there's sixteen to seventeen additional standards that have to be satisfied in certain circumstances. Now, not every single one of those standards applies to every case. It's normally uh the first, you know, one through seven of those standards. Um, and the ones that normally apply to um a, a, a development like this would be the normal and orderly development, um substantial impairment of existing uses, those kinds of standards that apply, um, the more general standards that apply would be the ones that would apply to a application um for a development that requires conditional use. Um, and in those circumstances, the plan commission reviews the um, you know, reviews the development, uh considers those standards and um during a public hearing and, and makes a decision whether the standards have been met. Um, as um Dr. Paulson mentioned earlier in his testimony, um, there was a change in state law in two thousand seventeen uh that sort of flipped the, the presumption of approval um on its head, saying that where uh conditions have been met, agreed to be met, or where the standards have been met, the, the city is required to approve those conditional uses. Um, that also requires a substantial evidence, um, a substantial evidence requirement. So any approval or denial by the city has to be um proven by substantial evidence, which is basically supposed to be objective evidence, not just personal preference. Uh, and so those are, those are sort of, you know, a grand view, you know, thousand-foot view of conditional use standards in the process that they would be going through.
So in, in the example of a commercial corridor that is um, you know, halfway between successful and, and, and going out of business, and there's a proposal that comes in that wants to demolish an existing commercial structure with some businesses in it to build um straight housing. In the current scenario, that would be required to go through conditional use process and the plan commission could look to those standards and look to the statement of purpose in the zoning districts and in the adopted plans and say, we think if this happened, it would be detrimental to um adjacent property owners, et cetera, and could deny the conditional use on that basis, right?
Well, yes, I mean, in, in theory, they, they have to look at all of the standards in the conditional use ordinance and decide whether they've been satisfied or not. So it's, it's kind of hard to say exactly what their conclusion would be on each of those. But um, but yeah, it's a case, it's a case-by-case, yeah, it's a case-by-case analysis based on all the, all the factors and all the evidence that they have before them um on an ad hoc case-by-case basis.
And in that same scenario, if this were approved and this was now a permitted use, there's no staff that can look at those same standards and do that evaluation. Uh, that, those questions of whether it fits the purpose of the, the zoning district or impact, none of those things really come into play, right? This, it's just about building form, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the um, the question that you're, you're really asking now, um, when you're making a text amendment like this, or you're doing a rezoning, you're, you're, you're having that discussion now with respect to consistency and those kinds of things. Um, any, any regulations that are general regulations that are in the zoning code are going to apply and the, and staff will apply those at um plans, you know, the site plan review process. Um, but the staff will not, cannot use the conditional use standards in their review of a permitted use approval.
Thank you. Uh, I think I have just one more question, um, back to Ms. Stoudt. So when we talk about uh comp plan consistency with this proposal, I'm thinking through the mixed-use and commercial uh districts and the stated purpose of those being, again, to provide this um either neighborhood center or regional level retail center um as being kind of the, the prime purpose of those mixed-use districts. And then, I mean, I think every single one, whether it's C C T, neighborhood mixed use, T S S, the purpose of every one of them is really spelled out, their primary purpose is around this commercial center anchor. With, with these proposed changes, we can't, we can't really reference those purposes in those districts at all. And so again, like, we, we won't really have any capability to deny a proposal if it doesn't meet the purpose of that district through a permitted use process. Is that right?
Yes, that's right. So th- this would increase the thresholds and allow for some purely residential to occur as a permitted use, and, and that would not go to the plan commission for discretionary review.
And you say some, but I, I mean, it could be on any, any and all parcels. The sum is about market conditions, et cetera, what might actually happen. But the permitted use would apply to every parcel in that, in all those districts, right?
That's correct. And the sum that I mentioned was really just based on the fact that there's a different number threshold for each of those districts. So in the N M X district, it's a twelve-unit residential building. It could be accomplished as a permitted use. In the T S S district, that number's twenty-four. And in the commercial quarter transitional, there's C C T district, that number will be thirty-six.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I do have the information that Alder Miyazi had requested, if it's appropriate to share screen and show that now.
Yeah, please do. Go ahead. And while you're sharing your screen, I'll just um ask Alder to do a, a quick nose count before you turn your camera off. We had a moment there that we were skating on the edge of quorum. Uh, so just appreciate if you can double-check before you turn your camera off or, or leave the zoom for a minute. Go ahead, Heather.
Okay, let's see. I'm trying to find too many things open. Just a second. Here we go. Um, so Alder Miyazi had asked uh just to show the, the comparison between the participants in the Conference of Plan and Madisonians as a whole. And my colleague via text was able to just send this to me to, to pull up. This is from phase three of the Conference of Plan. So this was um done in, in twenty eighteen. And as you can see, the green here is the proportion of Madisonians as a whole in any certain group of race or ethnicity. And then the blue below is the proportion of the participants in the Conference of Plan process. Now, this is the race and ethnicity data. If there are other things you want to see, we also track um area of the city, gender, et cetera.
No, this is, this is good. I was just uh looking for any kind of uh ra- racial equity analysis, especially upon what we're dealing with tonight, but this is uh, that was good information.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Alder, figure out call questions for staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a trying to word this question, so here it goes. Um, I, I, I understand that we're following a master plan and that is something that was put, put ahead, put, put up for us ahead of time a few years back. And so, so that's clear to me. In your presentation, Heather, there was a slide that was showing all the other activities that are currently happening in parallel. You had them in yellow and green or whatever. So um I will, I will, I mean, I don't know if it's right for me to assume that those are additional tools to this toolbox that we continue to talk about, that we are applying also different um pieces of the puzzle to manage the, the housing strategy. So um if that's accurate, I mean, one, one thing that we have talked about a lot is about all the tools that are involved on this process. But what, what I think some of us still lack is the full visual of what this toolbox looks like. So is there a way that, I mean, I get it, I appreciate this slide that had the yellow things in there, but is there a way to have that um presented to us in a way that shows this comprehensive plan that, that the city has to move us forward in the direction of the, of the master plan? And along with that, along with the steps that we're taking, also include like, how much money are we putting into these projects? How much, you know, how, how um effective they will be financially? Because right now, we, we know that there is some money being thrown at, at the, at the low-income issues and at the um affordable housing issues. We know that land banking, you know, we have, we have a specific amount of money that we're asking to put in there. But that really is like a very low, low dollars that we're talking about. So is there a way that we can have this plan in one sheet of, this is all the things that we are, this is what it looks like as a whole, and this is how much money we are putting into it as a whole for the city?
Yeah, I'd like to defer to Matt Walker, if that's okay. It looks like he's ready.
Um, yeah, so, so on that, um, we've been working with um the council office to schedule another training to follow up on the one that we did um right after um you, you were sworn in to cover specifically how the affordable housing process works and how those tools work, um as well as how TIF interacts with the development process. So um we had some, some emails with Karen and we're just working to get that date scheduled so we can, can give that presentation.
So, so you do have something already put together of all the different um efforts that are happening? Not just, not just this, this particular issue and the land banking issue?
Uh, yeah, yes. So we have um a, an expand, we're working on an expanded PowerPoint that covers the detail of what's in uh the housing forward proposal. Um, so I think the question came up earlier is uh, how are we linking all of the different policy papers together? So um fall of twenty nineteen, staff took all one thousand pages of recently-written housing reports. We've read them, we consolidated all the recommendations, pulled up the things that were common amongst them. Um, that was scheduled to go to the Housing Strategy Committee in March of twenty twenty, and the meeting was canceled. Um, and so the conversation didn't happen. Um, and instead, what happened was some items moved forward in the budget process, such as land banking. Um, some were covered by a special working group of the Plan Commission in July, which is where some of these changes happened. So everything's been moving um kind of on its own timeline because we weren't meeting as Housing Strategy Committee, and we redirected a lot of the staff working on these items to handle COVID-related crisis response. Um, and so our messaging got muddled um over the course of twenty twenty. And so now we're trying to grab all those strings and put them back together to, to have a more cohesive package of how we're dealing with affordable housing. And so that's what we hope to cover at, at that, that, that meeting that we're scheduling.
Thank you, thank you for that background. I mean, um, definitely, I can, yeah, this is a, I understand a little bit better where we are, where we are. Um, but again, it will be so much easier to make these decis- decisions if we have a bigger picture of this project. And then there's so many committees, there's so many acronyms out there that are working on the same issue. And, and we definitely need to start working in silos and do a better job of presenting as a unified front. So looking forward to that, to that um presentation.
Alder, I, I would also suggest that um specifically for the items in the comprehensive plan, you could reference the most recent um update and report on the work from the comprehensive plan. And um I'm sure Heather has that, uh, if not quite at her fingertips, um, she could uh have it sent around again. Um, because it, it does, it, it detail for each strategy um in each section what the status of the strategy is. Um, and it, you know, might be a, a good way to get another snapshot on ju- just for the comprehensive plan, um where that work is. Uh, Alder Lemmer, questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you. So I was just, I was a guest of the suggestion that we're not doing anything else to impact gentrification and housing affordability. And I was thinking back to the long list of tactics that we reviewed in Housing Strategy Committee last year that came from the strategies in the Impediments to Fair Housing Report. Um, and I mean, there are so many different things going on to tackle this crisis. I was wondering if Heather or Lynette could just list some of the things that we're working on and how uh the zoning ordinance change fits with and complements those uh and why it's an important piece of the puzzle. If that makes sense.
Yeah, Alder, I believe that Lynette is ready to respond.
Sure. Thanks, thanks for the question. Um, so I don't have the, the full list in front of me, but I can tell you guys that my staff, especially my staff who all focus on development of affordable housing, are constantly busy. Um, and so we took all of these recommendations, um, as Alder Lemmer said, to Housing Strategy Committee, um where we were trying to rank them as well. And so um to Alder's foster's point, especially of um thinking about preservation as tax credits are expiring, um, our staff now have a list of all of the tax credit properties in the city of Madison and are developing plans of when those tax credits expire, when do we need to start negotiating? Um, we are starting to even talk to some of those property owners um to see how, if we have financial incentives in those properties, how we can extend period of affordability. Um, that you guys potentially will see some resolutions coming in front of you um for us looking at extending terms, um so that we can have that extended period of affordability. Um, we are looking at different ways to invest our affordable housing funds. Um, so a reminder, um, you know, pre-two thousand and fourteen, we had limited funding to do affordable housing. We only had the federal money coming in from HUD, our home and C D B G funds. And then at that time, we had our Affordable Housing Trust Fund that had limitations of how much we could pull on it each year. Um, through the um guidance of our nonprofit um housing developers of third sector um and other developers in our community, that's when we developed the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, and we used that, um, you know, to leverage and really focused on housing stock and increasing housing stock for a few years. Um, in these last couple of years, um, based off of feedback um from those strategies, we've diverted some of those funds to focus on not just um developing and leveraging tax credits. We're also looking at that missing middle or supporting different types of housing development. So this last R F P process we did, we funded uh for the first time large investments into co-op properties, um investments into um land trust, which we had not funded for many years. Um, and then also just kind of looking at how we can stay, um, you know, move forward and expand what developers we're engaging with. So the city of Madison is also supporting, or we did support individuals to go through the ACRE program um in order to support um more developers kind of in our community as well. So, you know, we continue to use that funding piece, um, because, um, again, for educational purposes, many people said it today, we can't force developers to do low income or rent restricted units. We have to have that carrot. And a lot of times having that financing piece is the carrot that can get those affordable units. Um, and so we continue to expand, especially the nuances in our request for proposals um, to target how we can incentivize and where we're incentivizing, um, especially for transit oriented and amenity rich neighborhoods for that development. So those are just, just a few things that we've been working on and will continue to work on and explore. Um, but as Matt said, um, we are trying to create a, another affordable housing one-on-one, one-on-one. So we can continue to expand and educate of what we're doing for services. Um, so there's the supply, but then on our end, it's supply and also case management services. Um, so there's, there's robust things that have to go into the development of affordable housing besides just the bricks and mortar of that building.
Thank you. Um, and I was wondering if Heather can just recap why changing the zoning to meet demand is an important part of, of that and how that works with the items that Lynette mentioned?
Sure. Well, I think we will find opportunities where all of these things can come together on one site. They won't be every single, um, instance of these zoning changes, of the impact of the zoning changes before you this evening. But I, I believe that with the full toolbox with land banking, with the commitment to fund affordable housing that's at a smaller scale than a lot of the tax credit developments that we've been seeing over the past several years. And with these zoning changes together, when, when taken together, those three tools are going to be um, really exciting tools that the city can utilize moving forward. And so as a city, let's say we, we find, um, a, 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 a smaller property that's well-served by transit in an amenity-rich area, and we're able to purchase that property for land banking purposes. And within the next, you know, several months, through a competitive request for proposals process, we work with nonprofit housing developers uh, to, uh, to come up with a proposal for affordable housing for that property, which we then support either through land cost or possibly subsidy through the Affordable Housing Fund or TIF or other, other means. Um, and that same development may be, may be able to move forward, um, with greater ease due to the zoning changes that are impacting these small and mid-scale developments. And so that's just one example. I'm not, again, I'm not saying that that is, um, going to be the, the rule and, and the way that every single project that's impacted by these zoning changes moves forward. But I think it is within the realm of, of possibility and, and likely that we'll see some of those examples.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Carter, questions for staff? You're muted, Alder.
Okay, thank you. Um, a lot of my questions were already asked, but Heather, I do want you to just quickly, um, go over the community engagement part, because I think that is the tickler around the community and the neighborhoods and the residents that they feel that they're not gonna have that. Can you just touch upon that one more time for me?
Sure. And I'll, I'll focus on the difference between the, kind of the system that's in place today and what would be, um, in place if, if these were to pass. Um, so today, um, by and large, if a developer is bringing forward a conditional use, I would say that it is, it is the norm. It is typical that that developer has met with uh, either a neighborhood group, sometimes a neighborhood organization, or at least, uh, nearby residents, maybe an informal group of nearby residents before they find themselves at the Plan Commission. I would also say that in, that this happens differently across the city, not necessarily just based on Alder Manic District or neighborhood, but based on the, the complexity of a certain project, based on the, the level of, um, interest in it, uh, for or against. And, and sometimes folks who are proposing developments may have visited a neighborhood group five times or more um, over the course of several months before they arrive at, at the Plan Commission. And so that, that informal process, it is really important. And I think that, um, residents in Madison do have opportunities for, for input prior to conditional use decisions by the Plan Commission, but it does vary tremendously across the city. And, and many of you as alders are aware of that, either by, you know, experience as, as an alder or perhaps by past experience you've had um, with, with organizing in, in neighborhoods and being part of that process. And so, um, once, once a development proposal lands at Plan Commission, there's always a public hearing for a conditional use. And registrants are, you know, registered to, to speak or voice their, uh, support or opposition, similar to what you saw this evening about a specific development proposal. Um, and then the Plan Commission makes, uh, an ultimate decision, really weighing what they've heard from the public. And then especially, as, as folks have mentioned tonight, uh, weighing the proposal against the conditional use standards. And so the, the public input is an important piece of it, but their decision is not based on, you know, a popularity contest. It's based very strongly on the list of conditional use standards and whether those have been, have been met. Um, now moving forward, a- and, and what I will say is that in today's zoning code, the way that things are set up right now, um, you, you don't see any multifamily development moving forward absent conditional use review by the Plan Commission. We have permitted uses such as, you know, what Exact Sciences did. That, that, um, that major reinvestment in that property is a permitted use. It happens to be in an urban design district, so there was some public, um, involvement there, but, you know, it, our office and industrial development, um, often are permitted uses. Um, even now, in some of these mixed-use districts that are before you this evening, one could move forward with a five-story office building by right as a, as a permitted use. But in our zoning code today, multifamily residential development almost always comes with discretionary review and a conditional use process. So it's, it's honestly, it's treated differently as a land use than office and other commercial, and certainly differently than single-family homes. And so what we're trying to, I think, accomplish as a city with these changes is to move the needle a little bit. And I, I would reiterate that these are modest changes, but to allow for the small and mid-scale multifamily residential to move forward in a more predictable way without Plan Commission review. And I do think that many developers, whether by a suggestion from an alder, suggestion from a neighborhood organization, or within themselves, will choose to attend a meeting, meet their neighbors, become, you know, be a good neighbor and, and hear some input from folks. But what, what a permitted use would really lack is that public hearing at the Plan Commission that would allow for folks to share um, their support or opposition or, or concern before the decision-making body that is the Plan Commission.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue, uh, for questions for staff. So President Abbas, uh, let's get a motion on the floor, please.
Yeah, uh, motion to move the substitute.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Is there discussion? Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd like to move an amendment to the substitute, please.
Go ahead, Alder.
I sent it to my colleagues, um, and I'll just read it very briefly, um, uh, uh, a motion to amend the substitute to reduce the TRU2 threshold for conditional use for multifamily dwellings as shown in Table 28C-1 of 28.032 from greater than 60 to greater than 36.
Is there a second? Alder Figueroa Cole will second. Um, Alder Evers used to speak to it, and can I ask you to please email it to the clerk as well?
Sure. Um, yes, uh, hearing the concerns from uh, residents in the, um, Mary Street location, by reducing the threshold on TRU2, it would, um, from 60 down to 36, it would likely prevent, uh, any speculation where someone would try to take advantage of that and demolish the current 22-unit building. And, uh, of course, Alder Benford can also seek to rezone that the parcel from TRU2 to TRU1, that's the other option. But, um, I, from what I'm hearing, uh, that this might be something that, a tweak that could be made. And, uh, if we're gonna be voting on this tonight, it seems reasonable to make this adjustment here and now.
Thank you, Alder. So on, uh, that amendment, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to according a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment becomes part of the main motion. Uh, and so we're back to the substitute as amended. Alder Halverson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for amendment.
Go ahead, Alder.
I'd like to make a motion for amendment of the, the substitute ordinance to provide that only those multifamily dwellings or dwelling units in a mixed-use building line within the area bounded by South Blount Street, East Johnson Street, Packers Avenue, Commercial Avenue, North Street, Milwaukee Street, Fair Oaks Avenue, Atwood Avenue, Eastwood Avenue, and Williamson Street shall be permitted uses. Any multifamily dwellings or dwelling units in a mixed-use building line outside of the boundaries of that area shall require conditional use approval. And I'm gonna send this out here so everybody can take a look at it. Essentially, um, there's been a lot of discussion tonight.
Alder, uh, hold on, we need to see if there's a second for your amendment?
Second for discussion.
All right, so Alder Halverson will move, Alder Carter will second. If you could please send that, uh, language and make sure you copy the clerk as well, Alder. Uh, and then if you'd like to speak to it?
There's been a lot of discussion, uh, tonight with the concerns around, um, you know, unexpected consequences or unintended consequences, the voices of the different, uh, residents, constituents, neighborhood groups, um, you know, I support like wanting to move, um, more quickly on developing housing. I think, uh, there's some concerns about uh, how this may play out, um, across the city. So this essentially is, is simply just putting a little boundaries, a boundary on this in an area, I think, that represents, um, a lot of the targets of what this, this resolution is trying to accomplish. And essentially it gives us some real-world data, um, of how this may play out or how this may work. And some of those concerns, if they're going to come into fruition, this will give us a, a good guideline as to how this may play out.
Is there discussion on the Halverson amendment, Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I, I don't think I'm capable of understanding the boundaries and how they interact with the, the zoning districts that are currently proposed in the substitute. Uh, nor do I think carving out portions of the city, um, on the fly, uh, is particularly wise. Uh, I, 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 I wouldn't have any idea whether or not this carve-out would give us an appropriate um, test case, pilot case, if, if those were, the words of Alder Halverson. Uh, I appreciate his intent to make sure that, um, these, these, uh, changes are appropriate for all of the city, but I, 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 I'm gonna be voting no because I don't really, uh, I can't do this on the fly. Thanks.
Alder Evers.
Uh, along with, uh, Alder Heck, I'll be voting no on this. Uh, carving out just the ISMS and saying these changes are applicable but nowhere else in the city makes no sense whatsoever. Um, you know, before we get down to carving anything out, perhaps in the, with the absence of the F-35 zone, we ought to put this on pause and refer it to Plan Commission or, or put it on file and bring it back. But to carve this out on the fly makes no sense whatsoever. So I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Bennett.
I, I just like wanna clarify, um, for myself. So this is just basically asking to take this specific portion and none of the, the rest of the city won't be affected. Is, am I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I feel like I'm confused.
That's good. There's a map, there's a map attached to that.
Alder. That's correct, Alder Bennett. And if you want to refer to Alder Halverson's email, there is a map that would outline the boundaries within which the ordinance changes would be effective. And outside of that, they would not. If this amendment is adopted. Uh, Alder Benford.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as what was stated before that, uh, the potential impacts of District 6, I guess I'm a little bewildered, uh, by this amendment and, uh, I, I, I don't understand the intent. Uh, I would like to echo what Alder Heck said, that, uh, it just doesn't feel like we would, uh, gleam of the type of data that we would need, uh, looking at the whole city by, uh, carving out a chunk of the city here. And once again, my concerns, uh, that will already be negatively impacted in District 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
Yes, thank you. I, you know, obviously there are still some unanswered, um, questions or I don't wanna say confusions, but unanswered questions regarding the zoning. Um, at appropriate time, I would like to refer this back to the Plan Commission.
Uh, Alder, we're on, we're on the amendment, which we have to dispense with.
Okay. You will guide me, I'm sure, Mayor, to the right time.
So is there, uh, further discussion on the Halverson amendment? All right, seeing none, I anticipate that there would not be a unanimous vote in favor of this amendment, so, uh, we will do a roll call. Um, again, the amendment would make the changes effective only within a small boundary uh, and not outside of it. Uh, all those in favor of the amendment? I, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll, please.
Alder Miazzi?
No.
Alder Revere?
No.
Alder Vitterver?
No.
Alder Waelier?
No.
Alder Abbas?
No.
Alder Oboros?
No.
Alder Benford?
No.
Alder Bennett?
No.
Alder Carter? I'm sorry, Alder Carter?
Abstain.
Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Curry?
No.
There's no? Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Figueroa Cole? No. Alder Foster?
No.
Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Halverson?
I.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Lemer?
No.
Alder Martin?
No.
One I, 18 no's, one abstention.
Thank you. Uh, with 18 no's, that amendment fails, and we're back to the substitute motion as amended by Alder Evers. Uh, President Abbas.
I would like to move a motion to place on file without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Alder, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I will, happy to speak. So the motion in front of us, we have heard from many public attendees. As well, we have read many testimonies and email about concerns, about improvement. There are two alternatives and which have a significantly, have an impact on the substitute. two alternatives and which have a significantly have an impact on the substitute if the both get adopted. Alternative one with the with the commercial zoning and also alternative two in which over two thousand addresses are carved out from this particular ordinance because of the negative impact of F thirty-five. I do think so, this particular ordinance as it is. Uh the matter of fact is it's not gonna improve affordable housing. It will have a minimum impact if we talk about construction terminology. I I do believe the biggest hurdle, uh there are many process in the construction, the biggest hurdle is to find finance for affordable housing. The options are extremely limited. You go through VIDA funding, city, county funding uh with construction raised as it is. I'm very skeptical about with with this particular zoning can provide an opportunity for for affordable housing. And if it can, it's gonna be a high-rise building to cover the cost. Otherwise, it's almost impossible within today's market without providing uh opportunity for affordable housing, without providing, city should be the one who should champion. And we should think about how we could help affordable housing first and providing some sort of financing around it, I did zero-dollar land banking, land trust, many other ways we could really help. Uh even, I do think so with our committees and commission, we could look into our process and improve the process. We need to go back on a drawing board and look into uh look into all those options and then come back. And the reason I did without prejudice, it will give us an opportunity to bring this back. And the staff can go back on a drawing board, look into both alternative, look into our affordable housing policy, come back with a better plan and see how could we address the crisis on hand, which is affordable housing. Another thing I would like to mention at the same time, a lot of people who living in affordable housing in the district I represent, uh even in a market-rate housing, they're uh they're paying over sixty percent of their wage or fifty percent of their wage for housing rent. Providing them on a thirty percent AMI housing actually uh open more property for people uh who are on fif- fifty to eighty percent AMI. So rather than increasing market rate, our focus should be finding a way to increase affordable housing and look into that direction. I'm also, I also think so in this particular substitute, there are some positive things, especially in a in a not in a commercial area and residential area, which should which should be uh you know, looked into that along with affordable housing, affordable housing and come back to the common council uh again.
Alder Alder Benford?
Thank you, Mayor. I deeply appreciate uh so much that President Abbas has said. And uh uh Madam Mayor, you might remember a former colleague when I was last on the council used to say it's not soup. Uh it's just not soup yet. And uh we've heard many people, uh this was never a ringing endorsement. And when I asked Ms. Stoudt, how much time and energy and effort had been put into this up to date? Uh I'm only uh I cannot imagine of all the thought that was put into it. So I don't wanna neglect that, and I wanna take time to recognize that. But uh we've heard from so many people, and especially me representing District Six, that there's just a lot of concerns. And I think former Alder Romo uh gave us a path forward by uh sending this back and uh spending more time talking about it. So you know, throughout this process, I guess I was a felt a little bit off thinking about some of the uh assertions that this is an equity issue or this could provide a additional affordable housing. And and please forgive me for my bias, but sometimes I feel like my head's gonna explode when I hear affordable, the word affordable, recognizing that so many people that I serve make only thirty percent of the county medium income. So I've said it at many, many other venues, that we're just not seeing five hundred, six hundred dollar a month apartments. And as we think about, will this build more houses? Yes, but the the need for truly affordable housing. So I only mention that because, once again, all the energy that's been put into bringing this proposal for that I hope that we can send it back. And I also hope that we can garner as much energy as really looking at truly affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I try to be brief. Um I wanted to first thank staff for all the work and effort they've put into this and all the different committees that have looked at it. I think uh voting to put this on file without prejudice today would be a huge mistake. Um I am supportive of this. I am a sponsor. Um I don't believe this is the be-all, end-all solution. Um we've heard very clearly tonight that there are a lot of other pieces that need to come together. Um but I don't believe we can address affordable housing or our housing crisis in general without without taking this step. This is an important step forward. This is one piece of many. Um I think if we can't get this done, um and we come up with a lot of excuses for it, um I'm I'm very pessimistic about us getting anything done. Um I think it's important tonight that we we take a step forward on this. Um minor, minor change. I think um it's incredibly clear to staff and Alders um that we need to take a lot more steps after that, after this than that. Um but we're not taking away community input on all projects. Um you know, one of the neighborhood associations sent us their survey results, and that's essentially what they ask. Should neighborhood associations still have input on development projects? Of course they should. Um but there's a certain threshold where it's it's not that helpful. Um it's not not providing a lot of value, and it's definitely slowing down the process. It's an incredibly expensive process to develop in this town. I think anything we can do um that that that's reasonable um to make that easier, we should. Um but on the bigger projects, which this would still um you know, uh uh be the case, um that absolutely needs to go in front of the Plan Commission and have neighborhood meetings, et cetera. Um this just raises that threshold a bit. And I think it's a good idea for us to raise the threshold, so not every single project is going to the Plan Commission. There'll still be a but you know, a large majority um of our projects uh going in front of the Plan Commission. Um I think the number I saw was, you know, five, five percent um out of out of stuff we've seen, um or four percent of the stuff we've seen um would have been affected by this. This is a minor change, folks. I think it's important that we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I agree with uh what Alder Furman had to say, but I'd just add that for uh President Abbas and 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 Alder Benford, I appreciate that you're hearing the voices of so many people who testified against these changes and that you've heard from otherwise. But um but the word that I heard in both of your comments over and over and over again was affordability and your concern about that. And the the vast majority of the reasoning behind these changes is about housing supply and hoping that things don't get more expensive, which they will uh if we do nothing. Uh uh you know, we have all those other components that that others have mentioned, staff and Alder Lemmer, that we're working on to address the affordability angle. Do we need to do more? Absolutely. Do we need to do better? Absolutely. But I I kind of would challenge the fact that you're focused on placing this particular item on file because of affordability concerns. Uh staff presented uh I think really well that we have a housing crisis and an affordability crisis, and we need to deal with both things.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer?
Thank you. I'll be quick. I don't wanna recap what everybody else has said. Obviously, I'm in strong support of these zoning changes. This is not meant to be a cure-all. As everyone else has said, we have to attack our housing crisis on many fronts, and updating our zoning is just one part of that. Um more people are coming here, a lot more people are coming here, and we can choose to do something to meet demand or or to not. Um we, you know, currently are working on getting density, but it's not meeting demand. And it's still typically or often not where it's best served by amenities. And these changes will help impact that in a positive way. They'll help reduce sprawl. Um and you know, an important point that uh we haven't discussed much tonight is that it's going to create a more predictable process, and it'll encourage smaller developers, which is a really important step. And Madison is is very unique in the country for how most of our multifamily has to go through a conditional use process. So I would encourage my colleagues to support these changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Martin?
Um thank you, Madam Mayor. Um uh both of my pre- the previous speakers uh spoke to a bunch of my points, so I won't reiterate them. But um just to remind folks about about the fact that Madison is the fastest-growing city in Wisconsin um and that we are anticipated to get, I believe, um approximately um around twenty thousand um folks. I'm 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 looking at some at at the stats right here and doing quick math, so I apologize if I'm a little off on the number. But approximately um growing our our population to about two hundred and seventy um thousand um by twenty thirty. Um and we need to have places for people to live. Of course, we tool, this is a tool in the toolbox. Um but we we also need to um think in addition to affordable housing about housing for uh for uh like market-rate housing and for everyone. Um as Alder Heck pointed out, um the scarcity will only uh raise prices further into the future.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I agree with my Alders that doing nothing is not an option because those who are expressing concerns about gentrification and displacement, uh that is currently happening now, doing very much in uh or do in part, let's say, or do large, do largely, largely do to a a housing shortage, a shortage of supply. So the increase in the uh the rate of housing prices exceeds the rate of increase in any incomes. Incomes have been flat for working-class people for decades now, but due to a uh housing shortage here in Madison, particularly, their housing, uh the prices continue to go up. But I also want to caution my colleagues that these changes are indeed modest. And I wanna do so by reading a couple points from Justice Castaneda's email to us all. Because if we're gonna pass this, it is imperative that we really do look at this broader package of the necessary changes. And I'll explain why. But first, I wanna read his two bullet points at the end. The proposal as written is not aggressive in any way, meaning it will not solve any problems, affordable housing, mitigation of racial inequities, housing shortage, et cetera. But it also means that it isn't strong enough to warrant a lot of the critique of it either, and that this proposal alone is not at all an aggressive approach to upzoning. This is not necessarily an example of 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 zoning as a substitute for housing policy. So what Justice is saying here, from what I take, is that the critique is a bit overblown that we've heard tonight. But it goes on to say it's a very modest proposal that coupled with other very deliberate discipline policies and policy tools could in fact assist in the creation of more affordable housing. But the proposal itself will not inherently lead to more uh uh housing uh to more affordable housing. In the same vein, if there are not very deliberate, aggressive measures taken to accelerate uh low and um low-income housing in designated areas, further accelerating um the proliferat- proliferation of of low and median income households, especially to areas that do not have as good a transit, access to employment, access to walkable green spaces, et cetera, that are present present in many of the designated areas outlined in the proposed ordinance. So now, and he concludes, he says it needs to be noted that the status quo of doing this is doing this already, and at some point, we have to grapple with finding a path forward towards increasing density in and around the city. And I also um wanna just read one sentence from Olivia Williams. He's the executive director of the Madison Area Community Land Trust in their e- email to all Alders. The proposed zoning changes are an attempt to deregulate the housing market rather than a progressive policy to correct for market failures. What we're dealing with in Madison right now is an affordable housing crisis that's due to market failure. And I fully agree, you do not solve market failure through market deregulation. You can only solve it through market intervention. We don't get to affordable housing and uh through this policy. We've acknowledged that. And I think in some ways, the narrative that was rolled out initially regarding this policy was a bit flawed. Um it's it's, we're making minor changes. I'm, I can go either way on this. My vote is somewhat conditional on this notion that staff and my colleagues together will work with with resolve and commitment to address our bigger crisis. Other cities like Minneapolis and San Francisco have implemented what's called a Housing Accelerator Fund. And it's a revolving fund that allows the nonprofits access to eat to money that where they can uh more easily be able to participate in a competitive marketplace against market-rate developers, so that when we get BRT in place, and we have this these high-value transit parcels, transit-oriented parcels, that they will be able to participate and and compete in the marketplace more effectively. But when they have to source their money from five or six different sources from uh different funding sources, it's a lot more challenging. And but concern is is that uh uh passing this tonight would put them at a disadvantage. So I'm, my yes vote is on the, is getting a commitment from all of you and from staff to really work diligently to put forth a housing-forward initiative that has teeth and to expand our land banking fund uh upwards to ten to twelve million dollars. Uh we're currently at three million, but at three million, we we can't get anything done. Our Affordable Housing Fund is, what, six point two million? That's not sufficient to be able to get the job done. We're not gonna be able to build our way out of our current crisis. We simply can't do it. And the notion that uh by building more housing somehow or another, that will bring prices down, it will not. It may slow down uh the accelerated increase, it will modify it, but it won't bring prices down. And bringing prices down or providing affordable housing has to be the commitment of every single one of us here. Otherwise, we're not doing our job. That's the crisis that is facing the city. So let's not fool ourselves that this is anything other than a minor change to the zoning code. And then let's get to work on that which will really uh make a difference. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'm also in support of this uh placing it on file without prejudice. I personally have spent a lot of time on this. Uh do also appreciate all the time that staff has put into it. Um I think it was a mistake to try and push these changes forward absent the other things that were shared in the reports that we've done. I think every city that I've researched and read about um that has that has moved forward with any kind of upzoning is always doing it in concert with other things to try and adjust affordability components. And while I agree that this is moderate and it potentially wouldn't have a lot of impacts, we don't really know. And I think we're we would really be missing an opportunity to do the other things that we're all talking about. And so when we get a report two years ago that says here are all the things that we could do to address gentrification displacement, and we picked the one to move forward with that's supported by Realtors Association of South Central Wisconsin, Smart Growth Madison, who's who's gonna benefit from these changes? We're we're giving up an opportunity. One one potential thing we have is to give density bonuses with affordable housing. There are complications to that. There are questions about how how do we, how do we check it? How do we make sure it stays affordable? But that hasn't been explored yet. So if we go ahead and and make these changes now, we're giving up the potential for one of those options. There are other options that could be considered. And if everybody is as committed as it sounds like to actually addressing affordability, to actually addressing gentrification displacement, why would we move forward with this thing that benefits those that have the most? And say, but don't worry, we'll come back, we'll get around to the rest later. We gotta do it all, so we'll just do this one first. And we'll come back to the other stuff later. And I think if we're serious, we should place this on file. And we should demand that we are putting forward the best we can. We have, we have a lot of limitations because of the state. There's a lot we can't do around affordable housing. But there are a number of important things that we absolutely need to try, and those should be put forward at the same time we're even talking about any kind of upzoning. So I think this was a real mistake to push this forward, and I also really, really object to the way that it was done, which is unfortunate because there was so much time invested. But from the moment it was released, this has been, this has been a marketing and a persuasion campaign on us and on city residents. This was never put out there as, hey, here are some different things we could do. What do you think about this? Let's work on coming up with something that everybody can embrace. It was always presentation after presentation about why this is just going to be great. And I, and I am grateful that a lot of the rhetoric around how this is going to solve our affordable housing crisis and how this is, you know, we're doing this in the name of equity. I'm glad that disappeared because that was really distasteful, the way that that was being put forward early on. But we got to do business differently. We got to respect the common counsel. We got to respect deliberation and having open conversations. When the council says, come back with a list of strategies so we can decide, we can inform how that's going to work, that needs to happen. This cannot, all of this work cannot happen at the staff level with direction of the mayor. That's not how this is supposed to work. There's 20 of us, we're all representing constituents. And I, I mean, I would be shocked if any of you can, can say with confidence that you think a majority of your constituents support this. I know the majority of my constituents don't understand this, and I've tried. I've gone to two neighborhood association meetings and tried to explain it. It's so dang complicated. It took me hours and hours and hours just to understand it myself. There were members of the plan commission that didn't even understand it days before they, they voted on it. And I, and it's, that, that's not right. For us to just say, well, just trust us, trust staff. We know what's best for this city and to not actually represent people that live here, that's not how we're supposed to be doing business. Let's slow this thing down. Let's focus on what we're all talking about, which is affordable housing and trying to slow down gentrification displacement. And let's put together a package of strategies that we think will work, and let's come back and do it. We're pushing this forward right now on its own is not going to do that. And the best thing it can possibly do is just move money in the wrong direction. So I, I ask you all to support placing this on file and let's get to work.
Alder Mianti.
Just said, wanted to say that I'm also in favor of putting this on file for the simple fact of it's important that no matter, no matter what the project is, big or small, we still need the input of our community, our constituents. I've heard from quite a few constituents from my, my district, and it's important to actually listen to them. It's important that what decisions we make, we should have actually a racial analysis study done to make sure that all voices are included. So I'll be also voting to place this on file.
Alder Vitter.
So there's an Arthur Ashe quote, start where you are, use what you have, do what you can. We have a housing crisis. We know that. This is where we are. We have this tool at our disposal. We have another tool on our plate this evening, which is land banking, which helps with that gentrification piece. Passing these two things together would make a strong statement that we want to build housing and that we want to do it in a smart way. There's more to come, but we have to start somewhere. And I really don't see the value of just delaying, delaying, delaying. So I would like to vote, I will vote to move this forward tonight. Thank you.
Alder Curry.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Is it appropriate to ask a question?
I, I think with the indulgence of the body, it depends on who your question is for, Alder.
Well, I guess process wise, this being my third meeting, I'm still understanding what placing something on file means, placing on file without prejudice. And a comment about that is we, we are a city that talks and we're very intellectual and those things keep getting carried out, but we have to take action. There are 20 of us, we represent a very diverse and large population, and we're not ever going to always agree. I think that's very apparent from the conversations and discussions we've had tonight. But what are the other solutions to put forward to get this moving and how quickly will that progress if it is placed on file?
Thank you, Alder. That's an absolutely appropriate question. And the formal Roberts rules term would be a point of order. And so to place something on file means that you are saying no to it. And to place it on file without prejudice means that the same subject or the same approach to the issue can be brought back before the body. But it has to, I think the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it has to wait 60 days. And to place something on file with prejudice means that it can't be brought back before the body. And so that's the distinction. That's why they, that they say place on file without prejudice is because it allows it to come back before you at some future point in time.
Can, thank you. Sorry, I didn't have my hand raised. Can I follow up?
Yes.
Question with your response? So seeing that, I don't know, it's just been my impression, again, as a new Alder, like every meeting we've been at, something has been referred to a future meeting to consider it. We've been talking about the length of meetings, obviously wanting to keep the momentum with public comments, but I'm struggling to understand why we continue stalling on things that are going to move us forward. Help me, please.
Alder? If I could help you, I would. But I'm afraid that the answer to that lies with your colleagues, and I am not sure if there is an answer. But perhaps Attorney House would like to try and answer that one.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I can answer that, but just one clarification on placing on file without prejudice allows the item or similar item to come back without any restriction on the number of days. If it's, if it's rejected or placed on file with prejudice, it cannot come back for at least 60 days. But when it's placed on file without prejudice, it can come back at any time.
Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it, Attorney House. Alder Herter.
Thank you. I just wanted to know when it's appropriate to move referral to the planning, Plan Commission?
Um, Alder, I, I think we have to deal with the question of placing on file first.
Okay.
And then you, if that fails, you could come back with a motion to refer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue to speak. Is there any objection to me speaking from the chair? All right, seeing no objection, I appreciate it. I'm not even sure where to begin. I, I find this conversation just incredibly frustrating. It seems so clear to me, we have, we are facing a multiple, multiple crises in our housing market in Madison. Yes, we have an affordability crisis. And yes, we are doing many things to work on that. We also have a supply crisis. And we're, we're frankly not doing very much to work on that. And it shows. We also have deep issues around the history of land use and zoning in this community that, you know, haven't even been part of the conversation, and I think really have to be. You know, Madison, like almost every other city in this country, has a really disgraceful history of redlining. And when redlining became illegal, the next thing they did was to make it impossible to build multifamily housing in the vast majority of our city. That's why we have these legacies of not being able to build multifamily housing in so many of our zoning districts. So why, why is it okay for some people's homes to be easy to build? Why is it okay to have some people's homes be desirable and wanted in our neighborhoods and not others? It shouldn't be just homeowners who can have their homes built by right. Over half our city rents. Why are renters not able to have their homes built by right in our neighborhoods? Why is it okay to build offices by right in our neighborhoods, but not housing? Why is that? That feels very wrong to me. And this is a small part of making some of that right. This isn't about creating subsidized housing. It's not about lowering rents. It is about keeping rents from going up faster and faster as they have been. Our vacancy rate right now in Madison is 3%. Now, that's an improvement. When I was elected, it was closer to 1%. But 3% is not anywhere near a healthy housing market, right? We need to be at 5 or 6% vacancy to have a healthy housing market. And in order to get there, we would have to add immediately, right now, today, between 3,000 and 4,000 housing units. 3 to 4,000 housing units, just to get to a place where we have a rational vacancy rate, not even to keep up with, with growth. We have to add 2,000 housing units a year to keep up with population growth. So we have a very serious supply problem here. We are not building enough to deal with the problem we already have, much less to keep up with population growth. This is a very small part of addressing that. It's a step in the right direction. It's not anywhere near far enough, but it is a step in the right direction. And this proposal didn't come from the developers. It came from the comprehensive plan. It came from our housing reports. Came from city staff, came from our housing strategy committee, came from our plan commission. Staff developed this approach following your direction. When you adopted those reports, you told them to work on those recommendations, and that's what they did. And yes, they did a rez j analysis, and they have all along, every step of the way, included equity in their considerations. We just have to look around the country at what has happened in other cities who failed to act to build more housing, who waited too long to do something about displacement, to know that we don't want to be in that situation. And you know what? We already have waited too long. We didn't act fast enough. But the solution is not to say, wait, no, let's not do it yet. The solution is to act faster and to do more to catch up, to build the units that we need to build, so that we're not excluding people from our community because we don't have enough places to house them, so that we're not forcing people out because the lack of housing raises rents above their ability to pay. And yes, we are using as many of the tools as we can, and there are more that we need to develop. We are funding tax credit subsidized housing. We're insisting on longer periods of affordability for the projects that we fund. We're funding co-ops. We're funding the land trust. We're funding rehab of existing housing. We're funding the preservation of naturally occurring affordable housing and the expiring tax credit properties. We're funding of energy efficiency in national, naturally occurring affordable housing. We are prioritizing the creation of affordable housing along transit corridors, and we are land banking land to make that possible into the future. We've made changes to our zoning code and our ordinances to make it easier to establish cooperatives and housing cooperatives across the city. We've, in the past, made it easier to build accessory dwelling units, and we will do more to make that more possible. We are supporting women and people of color to get into the commercial real estate business and identifying parcels of city land that they might be able to compete, to develop into hopefully missing middle housing. I attended a fantastic presentation by one of our Madison Acre teams, and they are proposing a missing middle housing development for which they literally said in their presentation that currently they'd have to get a conditional use permit, but if this zoning change passed, it would be easier for them to do their development. We're land banking and we'll do more. We have down payment programs. We support other homeownership programs. This is just one tool among the many, many things that we need to do to fix our housing market. But this tool is supported by our affirmative action commission. It received a unanimous vote at Plan Commission, including from former Alder Rummel. Of course, we need to do more. We need more housing. We need more cooperatives. We need a stronger and more effective land trust. We need more small and affordable homeownership opportunities. We need more affordable housing, but we also just need more housing. Alder Evers said, we can't build our way out of this. Well, we can't buy our way out of it either. It takes all strategies to get to where we need to be. And even then, it's going to take us years to catch up, which is all the more reason that we have to start now. It is a crisis. We have to take it seriously. Nothing we will do will be enough, but we have to do everything in our power. We can't delay. We've already cut the impact of this proposal in half at Plan Commission. We've already compromised downward. And now we're talking about further compromise, making it less impactful, starting all over again with something new? I welcome your ideas on how we get more housing and more affordable housing in our community. I welcome your ideas on how we prevent displacement. My staff and I have been working on this flat out since I got elected. Please, let's do more together, but let's also do this together. Finally, I want you to consider the unintended consequences of not acting. Unintended consequences like higher rents, more displacement, a tighter housing market. As Justice said, the status quo is not going to do it. So let's change the status quo. Let's start tonight with a small step. And then let's keep taking every possible step that we can think of so that we can improve not only the affordability, but the range of housing choice that people in our community have. I urge you to vote against placing this on file and to vote for adopting it. Thank you.
Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Very compelling. I, I felt like I needed to address the statements around our history of redlining. And the suggestion that this in any way is going to address that, to me, is, I think it's very misleading. And the fact that this, the only thing this can possibly do is to allow higher density multifamily in those districts that were zoned multifamily, where lower income folks were pushed to, so they can lose their housing and new high rise can come in this place, or market rate housing can go in commercial corridors. We're not touching single family zoning with this. We're going to talk about redlining. We're going to talk about the history of zoning and how it was used. That damage has been done, and the way to undo that is not going to be with this, this zoning proposal. It doesn't touch it, not even close. And this is the kind of rhetoric that takes what, yeah, is maybe a moderate proposal, maybe it hurts a little bit, maybe it helps a little bit, we can have a policy discussion, but when we use this kind of rhetoric and confuse people... We can have a policy discussion, but when we use this kind of rhetoric and confuse people and pretend like this is part of us undoing racial segregation and redlining, it's just, it's not helpful. And I really think we need to be, just stick to the facts. Let's talk about what's in front of us. And, you know, it's great how you pulled all that stuff together. I mean, it sounds like we're ready for a campaign. But that's not what we're supposed to be doing tonight. We're supposed to be looking at our zoning code and saying, should we change it or not? And all the rest of that, honestly, is a distraction. And I just, I really urge everybody to really think about what's in front of us. If you understand it really well and you honestly think it's going to improve things for people in your district and for the city, then vote for it. If you're not sure, I would not vote for it. Thank you.
Vice President Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really, really appalled with some of the things that have been said tonight. And calling discussions of equity rhetoric, discounting the fact that there has been a rez j analysis done and continues to happen on this particular change. I also want to talk about the fact that the Affirmative Action Commission, even though this was not directed to the commission, we spent a substantial amount of time talking about this and its effects from a housing perspective, as well as from a labor perspective. The Affirmative Action Commission fully supports this. And would like to remind folks that there was a very robust engagement effort with people of color, with every, with, or with historically marginalized groups in this city. And this came from that. As the mayor said, this also came from the impediment, I'm sorry, impediments to fair housing choice study. Again, more equity analyses happening. I would like to call attention to one paragraph that I will read pretty quickly from the letter from the Affirmative Action Commission addressing some of things that are relevant to this conversation. "Finally, we cannot forget the very real historical context of housing segregation and the impact of redlining in our community. We should all be well aware that housing segregation sanctioned by redlining in the early mid to, or early to mid 20th century has continued to exacerbate racial and wealth inequality in our beloved city. It is clear that throughout the country and in our community that the legacy of redlining, while outlawed in the 1960s in Madison, continues to have disproportionate impact through the existing zoning laws. This is our chance to address one of the legacies of historic, historical discrimination." That's not rhetoric. That's, that's real. And to refer to the work that the rez j analysis and the thoughts of the Affirmative Action Commission as rhetoric is, is not okay. This is an equity issue on more than one level. And to dismiss this piece of legislation because it doesn't fix the legacy of redlining in its entirety in one fell swoop is bonkers to me. We have a chance to take that first step. Does this mean we stop and we say, yep, we solved it? No, we keep going. But we got to take that first step. We absolutely have to. Thank you.
President Abbas.
Thank you. I, I don't want to repeat again what Alder Foster said, but I agree with him on his comment around redlining. I will also say that none of us here want to stop the process. None of us said we want to keep status quo. None of us said we want to force people out from here. And none of us said we want to keep the way the Madison is. We don't want to have higher vacancy rate. None of us said that. What we are trying to say here is the narrative which was given in the public domain about affordable housing crisis, which is the top priority. This particular ordinance is absolutely failed. It might have negative impact rather than positive impact. Especially if developers purchase smaller, middle house or middle range, however you say, housing and converting to market rate expensive apartment buildings. And, and consider the market, the way the market is operating, the construction is extremely costly. Whatever they are going to construct, it's going to be expensive apartment to rent. Developers are there to make money. That's the business. Also, in each district is very unique and different. We recently, this particular council, previous council, in fact, they approve over 2,730 units in Oscar My special area plan. And the neighbors welcomed that through the neighborhood process. It happened through the process. It's very, very important to go through the process. Look at all the projects, tiny home, all the projects even got better with public input, with the help of public input. There was no NIBIism with tiny home or with affordable housing project. And this particular council approved it. And this has happened within the two years where I was working. If conditional use is an issue, if Plan Commission process is an issue, we should improve that process. Perhaps we should think creatively and merge Urban Design Commission with Plan Commission and have weekly meeting to move the process faster. Perhaps what Justice mentioned, we'll look into affordable housing projects into making the process better and faster. At the same time, it's extremely important. It took, it took me many meetings with the staff. And by the way, I really appreciate staff time. Really, really appreciate they spend a lot of time with me on this particular ordinance. And it took me time to understand how it's going to move forward. What are the plus and minuses? And I do not see any positive impact on affordability, on improving the rental price, and also how people can take benefits. I don't see from affordability point of view, any benefit at all. So it's very important for us to go back, understand, come with a comprehensive policy and look at their two alternative in front of you. Those, those also need to be discussed completely. And there might be other places as well in City of Madison where we have to really evaluate. So I will really urge you to keep the affordability. And as a policymaker, we need to really make sure we create a policy which really reflects the community. Rather than reflect on certain agenda. Thanks.
Alder Bennett.
Okay, I want to keep this brief. And also I want to reflect back to something Tash said earlier is that I too can really go either way on this issue. I wanted to point out some things that concern me that had happened during this meeting. Specifically, I, some, one thing that really makes me feel icky is that, from what I've seen, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, or there's something that I haven't seen, but from what I've seen, the main advocates behind this issue on either side have really been from white people. And I hope that doesn't offend you, but that's what it is. And that's the way I see it. And it makes me feel just so, it makes me feel disturbed to see people talking about the BIPOC community, about affordability, when those aren't the people advocating for this. And the use of continual references to Justice's email in some ways have been taken as, in my eyes, a form of just tokenization. And referring to Justice's email, we need to look at the totality of the email. He said, "This is a modest change." A modest, and I feel like modest is a modest way of putting it, to small change, to a magnitude of changes that need to happen. And I wish that some people that have spoken today could speak just as passionately about the magnitude of issues with affordability that we need to address. This never should have been marketed or put forward as a way to provide affordability as a way to help BIPOC developers in Madison, because it's not. And that, that's, that's the gist of it. It's not. At the end of the day, this is just helping with the supply area. And if that's it, then just say it. I don't appreciate the feeling of being conned into something that this entire zoning changes is not doing. It's just helping with the supply. And as I said earlier, I could go either way on this. But as it stands right now, I think that we would be doing a disservice to our time that we should be spending on the magnitude of changes that need to happen by relitigating this at a later date. So with that, I'll stop talking.
I have no other Alders in the queue. The motion is to place on file without prejudice. All those in favor of placing on file without prejudice, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Miyazi.
Hi.
Alder Viver.
No.
Alder Vitterver.
No.
Alder Wajhely.
Hi.
Alder Abbas.
Hi, thank you.
Alder Alboras.
No.
Alder Benford.
Hi.
Alder Bennett.
No.
Alder Carter.
Hi.
Alder Conklin.
No.
Alder Curry.
No.
Alder Evers.
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no?
No.
Thank you. Alder Figueroa Cole.
No.
Alder Foster.
Aye.
Alder Furman.
No.
Alder Halverson.
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
I pass. Come back to me, please.
Alder Heck.
No.
Alder Lemer.
No.
Alder Martin.
No.
Eight ayes, 12 noes.
With eight ayes, the motion to place on file fails. Alder Furman.
Mayor, I'd like to call the question on the original motion, please.
So the original motion is the substitute as amended by Alder Evers. Alder Furman would like to call the question. Is there a second? Alder Lemer will second. Multiple, appears there are multiple seconds for calling the question. Alder Abbas, was that a second as well? So is there objection to calling the question? Alder Abbas objects to calling the question. Alder Furman, it looks like Alder Abbas is the only Alder in the queue to speak. But would you like a roll call?
Yes, I would like a roll call, please.
Right, so on, on calling the question, all those in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Miyazi.
No.
Alder Viver.
No.
Alder Vitterver.
Aye.
Alder Wajhely.
No.
Alder Abbas.
No.
Alder Alboras.
Yes.
Alder Benford.
No.
Alder Bennett.
No.
No.
Alder Conklin.
Yes.
Alder Curry.
Aye.
Alder Evers.
No.
Alder Figueroa Cole.
Aye.
Alder Foster.
No.
Alder Furman.
Aye.
Alder Halverson.
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
No.
Alder Heck.
Aye.
Alder Lemer.
Aye.
Alder Martin. Nine ayes, 11 noes.
With 11 noes, the motion to call the question fails. President Abbas.
Thank you. I will like to move the motion to amend the substitute to include the changing from second alternate.
I'm sorry, Alder. I'm not sure, but you're asking to amend the substitute?
Yes.
I think you need to actually make the amendment.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, like.
But you have to actually detail the changes that you want to amend.
Yes.
We can't incorporate an alternate into a substitute.
Okay. Is attorney Hasis here?
I believe he's still here with us, but I'm not sure.
So attorney Hasis, the alternate I had, the second, my understanding was to have, you know, to move the motion to amend this substitute and include the changing from the second alternate. Is this is not in order? Is this is wrong motion?
Oh, one, one option we discussed was presenting the changes in your alternate as an amendment to the substitute. Just to clarify, you know, what, what changes you are proposing. So it would not be voted, it would not be voted on as a separate alternate, but as an amendment to the substitute.
So.
So, so Alder, I just, you just need to outline what the, what those changes are so the body can, can consider them.
So I thought I need to do motion and then talk on those alternate, no? Or do I need to talk ahead of it?
Not to explain, Alder, but to, just to literally say what the changes you're proposing are as your amendment.
Yeah, the changes are proposed is about F35 area. I'm just, I'm just really confused here because, okay, how I can move this alternate, which I, which is on the legislature? What will be the motion? Let's make it simple.
Well, to be proper, the motion would be to, whatever the changes are that you want made to the substitute, to, to move that language. But I assume that your colleagues know what you're referring to. I want to make sure that the clerk knows what you're referring to. No, the clerk does not know what you're referring to, Alder. So if you could please share that language with the clerk. And let's see if there's a second for the motion to incorporate the changes from, I'm sorry, Alder, is it the second alternate?
Yes.
From the second alternate into the current substitute? Is there a second for that motion? I'm not seeing a second, Alder, so I, the motion fails for lack of a second.
I second.
Yeah, I couldn't get to my buttons. Sorry.
All right, so Alder Carter was second. Folks, I know it's late, but we've been using this technology for at least three meetings now. So Alder Abbas, or excuse me, President Abbas will Alder Aba- or excuse me, President Abbas will move and Alder Carter were second. Um the changes from the second alternate into the current substitute as amended by Alder Evers. Uh President Abbas, would you like to speak to those changes?
Yeah, uh thank you. The reason I want to do that, if if tonight if this ordinance pass, I really want to make sure the area under the sixty-five decibel of F thirty-five impact, which will disproportionately impact people of color. Uh I think so this is disservice to the constituent. If we allow permitted use there and let the people develop the housing, there is staff is well aware. There are a couple of projects within a district which I represent where developers want to develop housing within F thirty-five zone, which I opposed very vocally. And I think so if with this particular ordinance, if it pass, it will give them an opportunity bypassing the whole process, community process without any conditional use plan commission, and they can simply go ahead and and create more housing. And the area of sixty-five decibels should not be have any more housing there until we we find a mitigation as well as, I hope, uh the planes won't come to the Madison. So that is the intent to protect the residents uh on the ground of environmental justice.
Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I do do appreciate that we're looking to actually mitigate and talk more about um actions in the F thirty-five affected area. Um but I'm incredibly disappointed um how this is being introduced and when it's being introduced. Um President Abbas did not share this with his colleagues. Um I know he blogged about it last night, so I happened to see it this morning. Um but but this is this is a substantial change. Um and I I really would have preferred that uh it actually be sent out. And so I have a question for staff, um possibly either John Strange or Heather Staudt to ask, what are some of the other ways to accomplish this besides um uh amending um what's in front of us this evening? Are there other ways um to to achieve uh what Alder Abbas is trying to achieve? Assuming staff is actually familiar with this, because as I said, Alders didn't find out about this until uh if they had seen about uh President Abbas's uh blog. So maybe John Strange, if he could.
Yeah, Attorney Strange or or Ms. Staudt?
Yeah, no. Yeah, I can. Um so so what Alder Abbas is trying to do is basically maintain the status quo within that sixty-five decibel um contour that is uh what would be attachment B to the second alternate in Legistar. So if this if the substitute were to pass, um areas within that contour that would be changing from a conditional to permitted use would remain a conditional use. That's that's essentially the the motion that he's making. Um the 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 second alternate is attempting to do that by um by adding a supplemental regulation to twenty-eight point one fifty-one, uh which is a section of the code that was already being amended by this particular um proposal. Um and it would literally add in all of the addresses, uh all of the parcel addresses, any part of which um lies within that sixty-five decibel contour. So we'd have a supplemental regulation in the zoning code that includes what I think is about eight hundred and fifty addresses. Um so that's the way that's the way that this proposal would work. And the reason that it's 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 being proposed in this way is because this is a text amendment. And in order to make an amendment to the substitute that's already been noticed and gone through the Plan Commission, we had to amend, we'd have to amend something that's already been noticed and coming through. So another way to do it in a separate ordinance would be to create an overlay district um that would essentially do the same thing, but that would be a separate ordinance, and we couldn't do that within the context of this ordinance, because that hadn't been noticed. Um that would be an actual zoning map amendment that would have to be noticed and go through another another process. Um and so that that would probably, i- in a perfect world, that would be the preferable way to do this, just because we wouldn't have eight hundred and fifty addresses in twenty-eight point one five one of the zoning code. Um but it's impossible to do within the context of this proposal, because it hasn't been noticed like as as a map amendment. Um so I think that I think that answers your question.
So I I we could
I appreciate that.
Yeah. We could
Attorney Strange.
Tour or whatever. So go ahead.
Could you could you talk more about what would happen if it was separate? I mean, so you said, you know, that that it would actually be noticed, so tho- those property owners would know um that something would be different than what's been, you know, talked about since council introduction on February second, right? I mean, so would that go in front of the Plan Commission? Would they look at this as, you know, whether or not this was a a good, you know, planning decision and have a hearing on it? I mean, what does what does it look like if this was a separate process?
Well, if if we were to do a map amendment, if we were to do it to an actual rezoning or a map amendment to create an overlay district, um then it would be a a separate legislative process that would have its own Plan Commission hearing and come back to the council um for a decision about whether to essentially add a a layer of restrictions over the existing zoning. Um and so in this case, those restrictions would be to require conditional use for areas that are permitted. So so just to try to walk everybody through it step by step. If if this substitute were to pass tonight without Alder Abbas's amendment, then there are some parcels within that sixty-five decibel contour that would switch from being conditional to permitted. Okay? And that's what Alder Abbas is trying to to prevent. So he would, if if his amendment doesn't pass, the alternative would be for him to introduce an an ordinance to create an overlay district. Um and a zoning overlay district is one that places additional restrictions on top of existing zoning. So the additional restrictions that he would be passing in that overlay would be to require conditional use for those properties. So it'd be accomplishing the same thing, but just in a different different mechanism. And from a purely just uh you know, code standpoint, we wouldn't have eight hundred eight hundred geographic addresses in in the code. We would just have a a zoning overlay district, kind of like we do for wellhead protection and some other other overlay districts there. But it would have its own legislative process, go to the Plan Commission, come back to council for approval, um similar to this one.
Great, thank you.
President Abbas?
Yeah, just a small comment uh for Alder Furman. Uh you mentioned about, you know, last hour of the process, you were not happy. This uh Attorney Strange is here. This uh alternative was uploaded on Friday. And Attorney Strange can uh verify that. So it was on Legistar. Uh perhaps you were not aware or you haven't read it. So just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I uh at at Plan Commission, when we considered a recent uh rezoning for a a a large, I guess it was a specific development plan for a uh a large parcels out uh in in Alder Abbas's district, I supported uh not allowing a a residential development plan to go through for the eastern part of this parcel because of the F thirty-five uh sixty-five decibel uh contour line. And I appreciate what what President Abbas is is after. But um I I feel like we're uh sort of mixing apples and oranges. And I would prefer that we take the approach that Attorney Strange uh mentioned and and not mix these two issue, important issues together at this late moment. I didn't know about this either until today. So uh um I I I maybe I should have noticed it in Legistar, but I didn't. And uh I think it would have been better to send uh an email to everyone. But even even with that, I still think it's 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 better to handle these separately. And I I would strongly consider supporting a separate separate effort if it did come forth. Thanks.
Alder Alder Evers?
Yeah, I'll be I'll be brief. Um I do think there's wisdom in creating an overlay district, as Attorney Strange suggests. I think it's cleaner. And I would support that. Um it I don't know that what uh President Abbas is suggesting, that there be no permitted uses within this area, eliminating them all, and that we put a moratorium on all new construction within this area that I think needs to be fleshed out. Um and I I don't think we're prepared to to deliberate on this tonight. So I I would uh I won't be supporting the alternate or the amendment alternate or whatever you work on it, so.
Thank you, Alder. Uh I have no other Alders uh wishing to speak on the the Abbas amendment. Uh so just to be clear, um there is an alternate outlined in Legistar. Um I agree, Alder, it would be um considerate to email it to your colleagues. Uh that um makes the changes as described, I think, most eloquently by Attorney Strange. That that language has been moved and seconded to incorporate into the substitute as amended by Alder Evers. I'm gonna assume that we need a roll call on this one. Uh so all those in favor of the changes that President Abbas is proposing, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Miyazi?
Aye.
Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Vitterver?
No.
Alder Wajhely?
Hi.
Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Alboras?
No.
Alder Benford?
No.
Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Carter?
Aye.
Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Curry?
No.
Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
No.
Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Halverson?
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Lemer?
No.
Alder Martin?
No.
Nine ayes, eleven nos.
With nine ayes, the amendment fails. And we're back to the main motion, which is the substitute as amended by Alder Evers. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote on the substitute as amended by Alder Evers. I'm gonna assume that we need a roll call. Uh Alder Harrington McKinney?
Um on um, Madam Mayor, could we have the reading of what's before us, please?
Certainly, Alder. So what's before us is the substitute that came out of Plan Commission um as amended by Alder Evers and um I admit that it's been so long that I honestly don't remember what your amendment was, Alder Evers. So would you state it briefly? Oh, was it TRU uh change?
TRU two uh reducing the threshold from sixty to thirty-six.
Thank you, Alder, for refreshing my memory. So uh Alder Harrington McKinney, it's the the Plan Commission substitute with a a change to the TRU two district. Alright, so that's what's before us. Um all those uh in favor, aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called, and I will ask the clerk yet again to call the roll.
Alder Miyazi?
No.
Alder Vervier?
No.
Alder Vitterver?
Aye.
Alder Wajhely? I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me?
No.
Thank you. Alder Abbas?
No.
Alder Alboras?
Aye.
Aye.
Alder Benford?
No.
Alder Bennett?
Deb.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Can you repeat it for me?
You come back to me.
Oh, yes. Alright, Alder Carter?
No.
Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Alder Foster?
No.
Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Halverson?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Lemer?
Aye.
Alder Martin?
Aye.
And Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Eleven ayes, nine nos.
With eleven ayes and nine nos, the item passes. And believe it or not, we are still in public hearings. So that will bring us to agenda item number six. Open a public hearing on Legistar six four three four nine, creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district at ninety-three oh one Crosswinds Lane. Um oop, sorry, I have to get the registrants list up again. Um we had had perhaps one registrant, uh Conrad Gorman of Shaw Court, representing Perch Properties in support uh uh not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions. On the off chance that Conrad is still here, are there questions for our registrant? Seeing none, uh we'll close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt with conditions?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor and come to item seven. Uh I'll open a public hearing on Legistar six five two two eight, which is a transfer of license location for international commons. Uh we have no registrants on item seven. I'll close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of granting the license? Seeing none, we will grant that and move to item eight. Uh open a public hearing on Legistar six five two two nine, which is a new license for Chuck E. Cheese. Um we have no registrants. I'll close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that takes us to item nine. I'll open a public hearing on Legistar six five two three zero, which is a new license for the Dive In. And on item nine, we had one registrant, Ryan Ramming of Atwood Ave, in support, available to answer questions. Any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant with conditions?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is granted with conditions. Uh which brings us to item ten. I'll open a public hearing on Legistar six five two three one, which is a new license for the Dollar General Store. On item ten, we have no registrants. I'll close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to place on file?
Second.
The motion is to place on file. Uh is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of placing on file? Seeing no objection, that item is placed on file. Brings us to item number eleven. I'll open a public hearing on Legistar six five two three two, uh which is a new license for Big Sur Cantina. Then item eleven, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing no objection, move to item twelve. I'll open a public hearing on Legistar six five two three three, which is a new license for Marigold Kitchen. We have no registrants on item twelve. Close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to grant?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, takes us to item thirteen. I will open a public hearing on Legistar six five two three four, a new license for Portillo's hot dogs or possibly Portillo's. Uh we have one registrant, Luigi Renary of Oak Brook, Illinois, in support, representing Portillo's or Portillo's Hot Dogs LLC, available to answer questions. Are any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move, motion to grant?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing none, that takes us to Item Fourteen. I will open a public hearing on Legistar 65249, which is a new license for Little Palace. We have no registrants, I'll close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move, motion to grant?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of granting, and move to Item Fifteen, which is a public hearing on Legistar 65250, a new license for McTaggart's Market and Deli. We had one registrant, Richard Shoberg of Summer Ridge Drive, in support, available to answer questions, are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move, motion to grant with conditions?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant with conditions, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that license is granted with conditions, brings us to Item Sixteen, which is Legistar 65293. Open a public hearing to grant Class A liquor, Class A beer, Class A cider, Class B beer, Class B combination liquor and beer, Class C wine. 2021 to 2022 license renewals with restrictions as previously approved, and to include any change of corporate structure and amended conditions as set forth in the report. On Item Sixteen, we have no registrants, I will close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Motion to grant?
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, those items are all granted with their conditions and recommendations. Takes us to Item Seventeen, Legistar 65031. We'll open a public hearing on discontinuing and vacating a portion of the public road right-of-way of Mineral Point Road. We have no registrants on Item Seventeen, I'll close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move, motion to adopt?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor adopting Item Seventeen. Item Eighteen is Legistar 65449, we'll open a public hearing approving plans, specifications, and a schedule of assessments for Melvin Court and Ridgeway Avenue Resurfacing Assessment District. We have no registrants on Item Eighteen, I'll close that public hearing, President Abbas.
Move, motion to adopt?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is adopted, and that is the end of our public hearings. We have one more item, Item 115. President Abbas, let's get a motion on Item 115, please.
One minute, Mayor, I'm just pulling that one.
It's on the addendum at the very end of your agenda.
I do not see it, where is that?
Page forty-three of the agenda, Alder?
Page number forty-three?
Yes.
I don't have that here, anyhow, what is the motion, Mayor?
So, the item is Legistar 63575, it's approval of the City of Madison's land banking policy, and the recommendation from the Housing Strategy Committee is recommend to council to adopt.
Move, motion to adopt?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adopt the land banking policy. We did have one registrant, Kurt Paulson of Ramsey Road in Middleton, available to answer questions, are there questions for Mr. Paulson? Seeing none, are there questions for Alder Figueroa Cole?
Is Mr. Paulson still here?
Let's see, I believe so. Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Alder.
So, I, can you please clarify, Mr. Paulson, were you one of the people that, that work on the resgi analysis?
Yes, I was on the resgi for this.
Okay, yes, so, just in full disclosure, I'm, I'm part of the, of the Committee of the House Strategy that voted for this just a few days ago, but I still have my reservations regarding the language on these, on these particular policy. I know we spent all this time dealing with the prior road on zoning, and to me, really, this is where, an item like this is where we should really be focusing on to make sure that we have language in place that addresses the low-income and moderate-income housing situation in the city, not even affordable housing, but the actual low-income and moderate-income that we, that we supposedly need. So, Mr. Paulson, can you please share with the rest of the council some of the discussions we had earlier this week in regards of the reasoning for focusing on, for leaving the policy open, the language open such as addressing affordable housing instead of focusing more on the low-income part, and the part where we addressing that this policy is open for, not only for nonprofit but also for for-profit organizations? While I know there were discussions on the resgi analysis that it was really trying to focus on for-profit organizations that would impact people of color, minorities, women, et cetera, but that wasn't translated into the policy. So, can you speak on, on regards to those concerns, why that language that you guys discussed that was more specific and more targeted was not transferred into the policy?
So, Alder, thank you for those questions, and I know that Lynette Rhodes is still here, so she can clarify some of the, the staff-level discussion. There were a couple of issues that came up, one which was, we added or recommended adding relocation assistance if there is a case where land banking or city money would be used to acquire a property that had current tenants, whether either commercial tenants that might be entrepreneurs or, or low-income business owners, and then certainly if there's any current housing on the parcel. The other issue that you were raising was that in the draft land banking policy, it refers to affordable housing, and I think the question you asked in Housing Strategy was the definition, and Lynette can point to the correct section of the statutes, but the idea there is that it would conform with the other definitions of affordable housing in the city, the MGO, and I believe it's four-point-something that defines affordable housing. So, but the larger question was to allow some flexibility for projects that might include economic development in disinvested areas as well as housing, so it wasn't limited to housing only. I'm hoping Lynette has that statute citation, or ordinance citation.
So, just to clarify, can I ask another question?
Sure.
Okay, so just to clarify, my, my concern with the, with the policy, the way that it's written, is that it's not specific enough to the targeted areas that you guys discuss in your resgi, resgi analysis. Like, I really don't have a big problem with the policy, it's just like, again, is the way that it's presented, it, it just opens the door for, for multiple, for anybody, pretty much, to, to benefit from it. And, and that's what I am still stuck on, I know there was some discussions about some other document that is going to be provided to, to be more specific about what the intent of the policy is, and I still don't understand why is that not coming together with this particular referendum? I mean, yeah, with this particular I don't even know what I'm trying to say, what time is it, whatever.
Right, yeah.
Resolution, Alder.
Resolution, thank you, oh my God. The resolution was an ordinance, so never mind me. Go on.
I, I guess we focused in on Section Two of the draft policy, which gives priorities, and the first is listed as affordable housing, and it says, the definitions of affordable housing and related income targets to implement this policy will be generally consistent with Madison General Ordinance 4.22, which is the Affordable Housing Development Fund ordinance, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what we missed there.
Okay.
You know, and, and so part of that criteria is also if, or when we get BRT, and there's a transit-oriented development, there, there may be the case that some of the land banking funds helps to produce a, a mixed-income housing unit, so it wouldn't be just affordable but would produce some subsidized units as leveraged with programs like the Affordable Housing Development Fund or the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit.
Okay, so, yeah, Lynette, if you have more to add to it, I have one more question after that.
So, I, I think if there is an objection from the body, we can go back and forth, but usually we dispense with it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Questions for registrants first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paulson, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, so now we'll, we have a couple of Alders, oh, I'm sorry, just one Alder in the queue, Alder Evers, did you have questions for registrants?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you, for Professor Paulson. The resgi analysis, under the recommendations in the section on, second bullet point says, regarding strategies to address adverse impacts, prevent negative unintended consequences and advance racial equity. The second bullet point says to ensure long-term affordability for land bank properties conveyed to nonprofits, provided long-term up to 99-year brown leases or a community land trust model to allow a development both city or nonprofit holds them. I've received some emails and concerns from people who have looked at the land banking policy that we have and, and would like to see it centered more in permanent affordable housing. Is there any reason why there wasn't this suggestion to actually incorporate that into the policy itself? A, a statement regarding permanent affordable housing or long-term affordability?
That's a great question, I think generally when we do resgi analysis, we provide a number of recommendations, but it doesn't usually alter or amend the policy, that would be at the relevant committee that would respond to it. I think, I don't want to speak for staff, but some of the issues may be that in some cases, a permanent affordability with a, a community land trust model would work really well, and there may be other cases, particularly along a transit line, where the only option you have with the developer is to do the 30-year affordability with the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, and then the developer would want to convert that to market rate in 30 years from now. So, I don't think that we would have to say that it always has to be permanent affordability. Certainly, that's a policy choice at the level of the Housing Strategy Committee and Council that they could consider in, in some cases. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Figueroa Cole will come back to you for questions for staff now.
Okay. So, Lynette, can you, can you please share with us again, what is the second document that is going to be, that is going to define the policy details, please?
Sure, absolutely, so what we talked about at Housing Strategy Committee is we are going to make an additional document to the land banking policy on Alder Figueroa Cole's recommendation that we add definitions to the policy as well. So, provided us with a list of terms that we should be adding, just for sake for that, so I just want to mention that for anyone that's looking at that, for, you know, just clarity of some of the language. And then the second document that will be coming is more of a process document, the process and procedures. So, what we wanted to get in front of you guys to start the discussion is the overall policy for the land banking policy, where we're going to target, what is the criteria we're going to look, look at? So that we can start having the discussions of where should staff even be starting to target in the City of Madison for the, the best availability for land banking for us? There's detailed questions that people have, like, I'm an Alder, how do I get in front of real estate to get them to buy something in my unit? I'm a developer, I want to know how I'm going to get access to this information? How long is the city going to hold these acquisitions? So, those are more of the process piece, and the process and procedures that we will now develop, once we have the policy, we understand where we're going to be looking and searching, and kind of the, the additional piece of just laying out in a little bit more detail that clarity some people have asked us for of how will we know where these properties are going to be and when will they be available?
And the last question is, how, how did the $3 million came into play, how was that decided? How do we choose just $3 million randomly? Like Tag was saying earlier, I mean, we, we definitely need to
Alder, that's what we put in the budget last year.
Oh, okay, perfect, that's why I just wanted to know, if that's, can you, then about the budget, quick question? So, is that $3 million that are going to be funded every year, or is that?
Although, that's entirely up to this body. So, we, we set the operating budget every year, and the, the capital budget every year, so, but yes, we, we had projected land banking into the SIP, and that it would be, it would continue out for multiple years, but we, the discussion of how much to put into that, to that project, is one that we can have through the budget process.
Okay, perfect, and, and would that be, can that be part of this upcoming project, budget process?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, all right, thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, Alder, are there other questions for staff? Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor, just a quick question for Lynette. When, in, for the few meetings I was on the Housing Strategies Committee, we considered this draft policy, and I know we had some discussions about some tweaks here and there, moving some of the program objective text into a more introductory piece, but it looks like what's on Legistar is still the November 23rd draft. There, there haven't been any updates based on those discussions since then, is that true?
There should be a draft in Legistar that's dated May 6th.
Ah, okay, I was looking at the wrong run, wrong, wrong one, my apologies. I'll, I'll look at that, thank you.
Thank you, Alder, are there any other questions for staff? Alder Foster?
Lynette, to that question of, of sort of focus or prioritization around permanent affordability, it sounds like that was sort of one of the, one of the items that you're interested in getting kind of policy feedback on, is if that were the will of the, so that's something that I'm, I feel pretty strongly about, I think we should be prioritizing that with, with the land banking funds. Is there a place that would be good to add clarity around that in this policy? Or do you feel like as it's written right now, you have that direction, or what? What's the best way, I guess, to communicate that, to, to find out if that is the will of this body or not?
Sure, so I think, I'm going to give you guys a little context of what the racial equity analysis team talked about with that period of affordability. So, in that process, one of the things that we talked about, and it was then a recommendation of just kind of, you know, thinking about that ensuring long-term affordability, but they wanted that flexibility, because one of the other things they talked about, especially with homeownership, is about wealth building as well. And so, a lot of times when we have long-term affordability, what we have in there is some type of shared appreciation model that keeps those units, you know, highly affordable, and therefore, as those resales happen over time, the equity that an individual is getting is very limited. And so, this group really talked about what is our goals with homeownership, and especially as a city strategy of ensuring that we're increasing homeownership for people of color, of is it a wealth-building tool, or is it about long-term affordability? And so, one of the things that, that we talked about was making that recommendation, but But as we move forward, the details of how we are going to pick the criteria for what we landbank and how we dispose of the land banking, that's all gonna go into an RFP or an RFQ, a request for proposals or a request for qualifications. And so we might want to be strategic that, yes, our long-term goal is long-term period of affordability for homeownership or multifamily. Um, but in some areas in the city, we might want to focus on wealth building and allow after maybe two, you know, sales, it's about, you know, increasing that equity. So I think we need to evaluate, um, you know, that criteria by as we select those parcels, where we select those parcels, and then what's best for that piece of land and what type of development we're doing. So I think that detail of what you're looking for might not be in the policy per se. Like, we we might want to prioritize that in the pilot policy, but it's gonna go into the RFP or the RFQ in more detail that we can have conversations about.
That's helpful. So I guess I guess you're saying that the opportunity to do that would come with each RFP or RFQ? And is that something you then like staff will sort of highlight that decision point for us that for each of those individual dispositions?
Yep. So um, and and so I think the mayor mentioned earlier. So like now for some of our developments, you know, we're going with this period of affordability for forty years. Um, just recently for Truman Olson, the way we structured that deal is a ninety-nine-year lease, um, ground lease. So I think, yes, with each um kind of RFP that we're doing, in that RFP, we can develop those criteria um and take that to the alder in that district and other bodies to get that back, in particular, what that criteria should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other other questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Um, the motion is to adopt uh the land banking policy. Is there discussion? Seeing Alder Foster.
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I um, I guess just on the the last point, I I'll say in discussion that I I do think we absolutely should be prioritizing long-term affordability. I think it's a real problem when we work so hard um and secure affordability only for a period of thirty years. And I I think we're gonna see that coming uh coming up in the not-so-distant future. And um, I think there are, there are ways to continue to support that when we've got the WEDA funds, all those sorts of um avenues. I think we should continue to support those where they're they're possible. But for our land banking um funds, where we actually have an opportunity to control the land, I I have a very, very strong preference to do the ninety-nine-year lease or community land trust model. I think it's it's really the only way we're gonna start to address this longer term. So I I do, I I also understand and value the sort of wealth-building strategy, but I really think it's different than a strategy to to provide uh affordable housing. And I'd almost be interested in having us, you know, two different pots of money. And, you know, I I I'm definitely supportive of getting money into folks to be able to buy a house on the market and reap the rewards of that. But um I think if we're if we're really serious about closing the gap on affordable housing, I think we should be focused on the uh permanent component of it. So I'm I'm not feeling creative enough to figure out how to work that into the policy at this point, but I just wanted to put it out there.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion? Alder Evers?
Yeah, it's a point of order, really, or just a question. I, well, this this policy is something that we could review from year to year and make adjustments and changes to it, I assume. Is that correct?
Uh, that's right, Alder. It's a a resolution that that this body will adopt or not uh and could revisit on some basis uh annually, more frequently, less frequently than that. And uh you probably wanted to have a decent enough time that you had some data uh to base your uh your evaluation on. But it absolutely, it can be uh changed, amended, rescinded, replaced uh by a future resolution and action of the council.
All right, follow-up. Would it be appropriate to add a line to that effect that we will review this on an annual basis?
Uh, although you, that would be, uh, that amendment would be in order. I would uh recommend that you do it as a perhaps, I I don't have the language of it in front of me, but a an additional whereas clause or an uh additional resolved clause?
All right, I'll work on that here real quick. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, uh, Alder Carter.
Yes, I just have a quick question because I think that um, and Mayor, maybe you can answer it or staff. Would we have enough data to really review this annually? Or do we need to do it biannually?
Uh, Alder, it's a good question, and I'm gonna defer to um, I think, uh, either Lynette uh or Matt Walker on this one. And do either of you have a feeling about um the appropriate timeframe for review of results or policy?
Matt? Yeah, I I guess I would say in in the beginning, it it might take more than a year because our acquisition timeline for a number of these, um, you know, it could take six months. And then the RFP to spin it back out um also takes us multiple months. Um, I would say after that, hopefully, we're creating a pipeline that that's moving on this. Um, I just don't want to promise that these first ones are gonna go um quickly enough to have a lot of data within the the first year. We can certainly try.
Thank you. Well, then I would uh do an amendment that we do biannually.
Uh, all right, so we, it it's a race to see who has language first then. Uh, uh, but perhaps Alder Evers would be amenable to that as he works out his language. And uh, Alder, I'm stalling for you. So uh, Alder Evers, do you have language?
Uh.
Not quite. We'll we'll go to Alder Harrington McKinney. Give you a little more time.
My question is of a personal privilege. Um, when will it be appropriate for us to have a break?
Alder, this is our last item.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alder Bedever.
Just a question about this. Would we not be de facto looking at it each year as we look at the budget?
Uh, Alder, the the amount of money we would be considered each year in the budget, but the the policy governing the use of it, um, not necessarily. There there is, uh, you know, we certainly could, I think Alder Foster alluded to this um in the budget process, um, send some direction, this amount of money for permanent affordability, that amount of money for wealth building, that amount of money for something else, whatever. And could, you could send those signals through the capital budget process. Um, but the actual sort of policy governing from there um wouldn't automatically be reviewed. And so I I think that uh what Alder uh Evers is coming up with is is in order and and wouldn't be accomplished otherwise. Anytime you're ready, Alder.
Uh, yes, uh, be it further resolved that common council will review the city's land banking or the staff will, I'll start all over. Be it further resolved, the staff will provide a common council a review of the city's land banking policy on an annual basis starting in twenty-twenty-three.
Uh, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Alder Curry will second. Um, uh, Alder Evers, additional discussion?
No, I I think it's uh, so it it explains itself.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter.
And I just have a friendly amendment to make it biannually so we can have the appropriate data to discuss any reviews, revisions, et cetera.
So Alder, um, I think the way that Alder Evers has structured it is that it that it would give um staff the the initial two years that Mr. Walker said they needed, and then it would be every year after that, which was amenable to him.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Alder. Um, I'm think that both of you, Alder Evers and Alder Carter, don't have your hands up anymore. Seeing no additional discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment is incorporated into the resolution. Brings us to the main motion, which is to adopt as amended. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the resolution as amended? Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Uh, and so we were are now at announcements and introductions of i- of items from the floor. I believe we had two birthdays, Alder Wahilahey and who else?
Alder Evers.
And Alder Evers, happy birthday. Um, Alder Miyazae, it is your turn to move adjournment if you so choose.
I would I would love to, but can I, is it is it okay to, can I, can I say one thing before we end tonight?
Uh, Alder, you can s- you can try under a point of personal privilege, but um it's
Can I? On personal privilege?
We'll see how far we can get, Alder.
I would just like to say, um, I would like all of us to challenge um ourselves that on this common council that we'll be able to, when we say uh things of uh racial equity and inclusion, to make sure that the data reflects that and everything that we do. So I just wanted us to work to uh collectively together in order to do this so in the future for everything that we do. And in that note, I'd like to adjourn and wish everybody a happy birthday and have a great night.
So Alder Miyazae will move adjournment. Alder Carter will second. Did you have something additional, Alder Carter?
Oh, I just wanted um, do Evers to send that amendment out to everyone.
Uh, yeah, Alder.
I I don't see it.
Alder Evers, if you can just share that language and um and with the clerk as well, please. All right, so it's moved and seconded to adjourn. We'll get there, folks. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, thank you all. Have a good night. Get some sleep.